Good evening. As Chair of the Extra Planning Board, I'm declaring that an emergency exists and I'm invoking the provisions of RSA 91- A, colon, two, comma, three, parenthesis B, close parenthesis. Federal, state, and local officials have determined that gatherings of ten or more people pose a substantial risk to our community and is continuing efforts to combat the spread of COVID-19. In concurring with our determination, I also find this meeting is imperative for continued operations of town government and services, which are vital to the public's safety and confidence during this emergency. As such, this meeting will be conducted without a form of this body physically present in the same location. At this time, I also welcome members of the public assessing this meeting remotely, even though this meeting is being conducted in an unusual circumstance, the usual rules of conduct and decorum apply. I might also welcome those who are also here to assist with the presentation and decision-making process this evening. So, welcome to the Ex support Planning Board meeting of June 25th, 2020. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states the name, please also state whether there's anyone with you in the room during the meeting. Votes will be, during the viral meeting, will all be done by roll call. And keeping the discussion orderly, please use raise your hands with the future in the Zoom software. And when a member of the public wishes to speak, or you see a raised hand, simply request the host or co-host that they may allow to talk, and ask the participant to state their name and address once unmuted. So, I'm Langdon Frommer, Chair of the Ex planning Board, and no one is with me. I'm just looking down through the screen. Peter? Stackler?
Hi, this is Pete Stackler, and I am alone. Thank you.
Aaron?
Aaron Brown, my wife, and two of my sons and my dogs. You might hear him.
Okay. Pete Cameron, please.
Yes, here. Nobody else is with me.
You are Pete Cameron.
Yes, I am.
Oh, thank you. John?
Or at least I was.
John Gruder and I am in our office alone.
Jen?
Jennifer Martel, and I am in my office alone.
Molly?
Molly Cowan, and I am in my room alone.
And Molly is our selectman's representative, psych person's representative. Gwen?
Gwen English, and I am in my room alone.
Okay, I believe that's all the board members here tonight that I can see. We do have a full board, so Peter, you'll be acting as an alternate tonight. And Dave Shopples is our Town Planner. The first thing on our agenda this evening, we have three sets of minutes to deal with. So, let's take up the minutes of May 14th, 2020, please. We're open to discussion or comments. These have been tabled.
Pete Stackler has his hand up.
Pete?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I just wanted to flag on line 118, where it says total parking cost is $90,000. I can't recall, I think that was referring more to driveway access costs, but maybe someone else can correct me there. And then line 147, I think that Laura Knott was actually saying that the building envelope of 25 by 25 feet was insufficient rather than sufficient. That's my recollection. And finally, line 186, where it says bring an update for June, I think a little more detail there would be helpful, so bring an updated financial viability assessment for June. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else? Could you turn your sound on, please?
Yeah, got it, sorry. Yeah, Pete was right on line 118, which probably should read paving costs. In looking at the cost breakdown in their packet, that was the amount that came in for paving.
Okay.
And on 100, maybe it should say the standard is to prove the plan, add plan is reasonable and feasible. If anyone doesn't agree.
Makes sense.
And on line 145, I may have missed this, if you mentioned this, Pete, I'm sorry. Probably should say the 100-foot buffer should be required across all lots. Line 151, Bob Litz stated it is totally inconsistent. I'm not, I'm a little confused by the meaning in line 161 and 162. It says it makes no sense to impose a 100-foot buffer if it would tighten the subdivision. Maybe someone can explain that to me. I don't really understand what that means. And that's, that's all I had. And I don't know if Daniel wants to look at the, listen to the minutes again, or listen to the tape again, or maybe strike that line, I don't know.
I could. Line 161, was that said by Attorney Pessai?
Um, yes.
I went through the minutes again because he had changes for them, and that was basically word for word.
Okay, well, then we'll leave it as it is. And I will remain confused, which isn't unusual.
You're up on like a score, Gwen.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aaron Brown has his hand up.
Aaron?
Thanks, Lang. Pete Stackler mentioned line 186, that was a comment by me. Daniel, the only thing you might add is a market update. I wasn't looking for them to update a big financial update. I had spoken to the real estate market, being it's my work, and had made some comments on that, and I also suggested that they bring a market update, something simple, just stating their state of the market and their opinion for the next meeting they're at.
Gotcha, thank you.
Thanks for the clarity. Nothing else, or does somebody like to make a motion to accept as amended?
I'll move it.
That was who?
Pete Cameron.
Okay, Pete, thank you. And a second?
Second, Aaron Brown.
Okay, thank you, Aaron. Thank you for identifying yourself. Moving second, any discussion?
Yes, can you hear me? I just want to ask Daniel if he's clear, I'm not crystal clear on what the amendments were, I know some of them, but not sure on all of them, so as long as Daniel is clear on what the amendments are to change them.
I've got something for all of them.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Okay, let's take our vote. Those in favor of accepting the minutes as noted, with notes, or changes, I should say, of May 14th, 2020. Aaron, how is your, how do you vote?
Yes.
John Gruder?
Yes.
Pete Cameron?
Yes.
Jennifer Martel?
Yes.
Molly Cowan?
Yeah.
That's a yes, Molly?
Yes.
And Gwen English?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that motion carries. Thank you. Next set of minutes is those of May 28th, So, the floor is open to discussing this set of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, this is Pete Stackler. I had my hand raised, so just thought I'd jump in.
Sorry.
That's all right, is it all right if I offer some suggestions?
Sure, no way.
Okay, great. So, line 88, where there was a revision, I think we wanted to say, Mr. Petropolis indicated that wetlands are impacted as low value, change that to wetlands to be impacted are of low value. line 130, where it said, Mr. Stackler added, there is not much if any, I would ask that we strike if any, that there is not much connection to the town forest to the east, and, and there's two N's there, one of those can be struck, and New Hampshire Fish and Game Wildlife Area. Then, instead of that, in the next line 131, because this site offers the last undeveloped road frontage on Epping Road, and it is an important area for wildlife movement. So, there's a number of suggestions there to clarify that statement.
So, you want to add another sentence in?
Well, I think that that sentence on 131 just needs to be
Yes.
reworked a bit.
Yeah.
And then, I guess this is kind of a question, and Mr. Quigley's on the line, but where on line 136, it says, Mr. Quigley noted minotraps were deployed, which mainly found the presence of predatory frogs, and I, it was my understanding that those minotraps had been deployed in the area noted as standing water on the plan set, but I'm not sure if minotraps were deployed anywhere else on site, so. And maybe we can't clarify that based on what was actually stated, but that was a question for me. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Gwen has her hand up.
Gwen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a second. On line 49, maybe just put square foot, or square feet, or square foot after the 20,040, between 20,040 and the YMCA, just so we know what the 20,040 means.
Hey, good. Some clarity?
And then on line 73, probably makes more sense to have, have it say develop, instead of developed a corridor study. I think that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any other hands, Dave? All right. I'd entertain a motion to accept the minutes of May 28th, 2020, as amended.
Don't move.
John, thank you. Second?
Second, Gwen English.
Thank you, Gwen. Moving seconded. Okay, we'll go for a roll call vote. Aaron Brown?
Stane.
Stane, okay, good. Pete Cameron?
Yes.
Jen Mattel?
Yes.
John Gruder?
Yes.
Molly Cowan?
It looks like she may be frozen.
She's froze up over there. Not going to work.
She's probably gonna have, she's gonna probably, that's happened to me, she's probably gonna reboot.
Yeah.
Potentially.
So, Gwen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay. Just waiting to see Molly someplace.
No, she has disappeared from the list.
Yeah.
Assuming she had to log out to reboot.
Well, Ms.
Yes, Pete.
Excuse me, why are we taking a roll call vote here and we didn't on the previous minutes?
We did on the previous minutes.
We did?
Yes.
All right, I didn't understand that. Thank you.
Molly's back on.
Sorry, everybody. And Lang, also, I wanted to note that Nancy Belanger, who is an alternate on the planning board, she's here, but she's stuck as an attendee, I don't know why.
Okay. But did you vote yes on the minutes?
I was kicked out and haven't voted yet.
Okay, well, how would you vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I vote yes, so. One abstention and six in favor. Thank you. And the last set we have here are the minutes of June 11th, 2020. And again, the floor is open to discuss these minutes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yes, we're on June 11th, that was our last meeting.
Okay. I do have a couple.
Okay.
If nobody else wants to go.
All right, you got the microphone, so go ahead.
On line 77, maybe identify she as Allison Reese from UEI. That may be the only one I had. That's the only one I had. Thank you.
I'm gonna watch the movie.
I had some comments towards the end. Line 248, and Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm looking at 247 halfway through, now determined to have info needed to enter deliberations, then table to the next meeting and not suggest closing the public hearing. No, I don't have the stuff.
It was, if you're asking what we discussed earlier about, did you actually close the public hearing, I sent that email to Daniel, he looked at the meeting and confirmed that we, actually, you did actually close the public hearing, and he will note that in the minutes that the public hearing for that application had been closed.
Thank you, David. Any other? Then again, I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes of June 11th, 2020, as amended.
Don't move, Aaron Brown.
Thank you, Aaron. Is there a second?
Second, Pete Cameron.
Thank you, Pete. Moving seconded. Well, I do a roll call vote. So, Pete Cameron?
Yay.
Jen Martel?
Yes.
John Gruder?
Hello, Stane.
Okay, Aaron Brown?
Yes.
Gwen English?
Yes.
Molly's still here, I just took myself off video because I'm having connection issues.
Okay.
And I vote yes.
Thank you. And I vote yes, so that's, those minutes are all set. Nancy Belanger has joined us, she's an alternate. Good evening, good to see you here.
Good evening, I was, I was here.
Okay, I missed you, I guess.
No, you didn't, I was in no man's land, I kept trying to email you guys, but anyway, I'm here and I'm alone.
Okay. All right, moving along on the agenda, it's completed, excuse me, continued public hearing on the application of Gateway at Exeter LLC for proposed lot line adjustment and subdivision of 170 Row at 170 Epping Road. Lot line adjustment will transfer 2.10 acres of land from tax map parcel number 47-7 to tax map parcel number 47-6, and subsequently, a proposed subdivision of tax map parcel number 47-7 into two lots, in conjunction with mixed-use development being proposed for the site. Subject parcels are located in C3 Epping Highway Road Commercial Zoning District, Planning Board Case Number 19-15. And last time we met, we also included the second hearing, which is obviously connected with the umbilical cord, so continued public hearing on the application of Gateway at Exeter LLC for site plan review and a wetland conditional use permit, with a proposed construction for multi-use development at 170 Epping Road, parenthesis tax map number 47-6 and number 47-7. The proposed includes a 224-unit multifamily residential complex, a two-story 48,560-square-foot mixed-use building that may include a 20,040-square-foot YMCA daycare center, daycare facility, office/retail space, and possibly a restaurant along with associated improvements. Subject parcels are located in the C3 Epping Roadway Highway Commercial Zoning District, Planning Board Case Number 19-16. And Dave, would you like to get us?
Yes, thank you. I'll, you know, my memo, submit that as part of the record, but I'll skip the description since you did it so eloquently, and just jump into where the status of where we are now. The applicant did appear before the planning board at the May 28th meeting, and was subsequently tabled to allow the development team to adequate time to provide revised plans and supporting documentation to adjust, address the concerns raised by the board at the meeting. They did submit a letter outlining those changes that I'm sure that they will probably highlight when they, when they discuss those changes that were made. The applicant also requests its impact at the proposed site driveways. We do have Mr. Ploard here, he is present, I asked him to join us in the event anyone has any questions for him, that, you know, he's available to speak to that, you know, to his memorandum and about the traffic. The applicant is requesting several waivers that I went before, I would go by if we, if we get to that point, I did notice, because I was out of town when this memo was generated, I had a family emergency, so I just recently got back in the office, and I noticed that the waiver motions, there is one missing, and I would go by the waivers that are requested in the letter from Heena Swanson, you know, received dated revised, oh, latest revision of June 15th, 2020, I would just go by those, because my motion is missing the curb and waiver, but if we get there, I'll, you know, I'll bring that up again. The applicant did appear before the Conservation Commission at their June 9th, 2020, meeting to discuss the recreation use of the proposed conservation land and a deed stewardship fee baseline for said land. A copy of their memorandum outlining their recommendations dated June 18th, 2020 was also enclosed. And I said in my memo, I'd update the board on any additional comments from the town, I did get a memorandum that I emailed to folks, and I got it today, and I sent it to the applicant dated June 25th, 2020, from Jennifer Mates, and she just reiterated, you know, her following, her comments that had been running along, there was no further comment, as you'll see on the original 20 comments she had on 19 of the comments, but she, I mean, 18 of the comments, but she did have a couple of comments still remaining, they're brief, so I'd read them. Number six is, "The Epping Road Corridor Study Interim Evaluation Gateway at Exeter, New Hampshire Memo Prepared by VHB Dated June 9th, 2020 Provided Recommendations That Were Not Incorporated Into the Revised Submittal. Specifically, the recommendations that the south driveway of the Gateway project be eliminated, and the off-site improvements need to be addressed. DPW would be amenable to a right-turn exit-only driveway where the south driveway is shown. The driveways will still require approval of NHDOT due to their location within the controlled access right-of-way." And comment number seven, "The internal traffic circulation is still a concern, especially around the proposed commercial building. The applicant should explain the traffic movements involved in the newly-added drop-off. There is potential for a lot of left-turn conflicts with the multiple driveway entrances in that area." So, those are the, the other comments, the remaining comments that DPW has. Also, you also received, not mentioned in the memorandum, I don't believe I had it at that time, from Peter Stackler, he sent a memo, he did a sit walk, and he sent it out, and I sent it to the board and the applicant. And also, since this had, you know, touches on Conservation Commission and so forth, I asked Kristin Murphy, our Natural Resource Planner, to be available, and I see that she, she is available, should, you know, the need arise for her to add to the discussion. So, joining us tonight on the side of staff is, is, on behalf of, or on behalf of staff is Jason Plood from VHB, and Kristin Murphy, our Natural Resource Planner, should the board have any questions. So, that's straight from now, and I'll pass it back to the board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dave. Oh, let's see, all those nice people on the screen here. Jim, I'm looking for you.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Floor is yours, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, fantastic, thank you. What I'd like to do, if I could, Mr. Chairman, is just take a few minutes, introduce who's on the call, and why they're in the call, and just build upon a little bit of what Dave just mentioned. I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the changes in the resubmittal. I suspect we're going to talk about traffic this evening, and at some point, I'm going to turn the, the mic over to Mr. Pernah, Steve Pernah, professional engineer, he'll talk traffic, and we're likely going to have Brendan speak a little bit as well towards the end of our presentation. So, with me in my office here is Tom Monahan, Tom is off to the corner here, and Jeff Monahan is on by phone, they're the owners of Gateway at Exeter LLC. Also joining from our team is a Thomas J. Leonard Project Attorney, who resides in Exeter, Brendan Quigley, who works in Exeter with Gove Environmental, Steve Pernah, I just mentioned, Mark Fugier, who's, who really helped us out with some workforce housing, and prepared a fiscal impact analysis for the project, joins us as well, and I see Paul Roy's name, Paul is with Procon Construction Managers. This is, of course, our second meeting regarding this project, May 28th, 2020. We covered a lot of information that evening, if you recall. Applications were accepted, detailed presentation of the site Applications were accepted, detailed presentation of the site plan and the CUP request. And we also went into the waiver request for the project. I thought it was a good meeting. It was beneficial to us and we heard quite a few comments and concerns. We took good notes. And what we tried to do is address some of those concerns in our resubmittal effort that Mr. Sharples alluded to. So again, our presentation will be in three parts. I'm going to talk about some of the changes we made. And then I'll turn it over to Steve to talk traffic. And then we'll wrap up with Brendan. And then, of course, we're all here to answer any questions the board may have. Dave, do I have screen share? Do I have control of the screen?
You're a panelist, so you should be able to share screen. It's just you have to hit the bottom screen button.
So can we see that on the screen? Is that the aerial map, correct? Do you see that?
I do not. Are you hitting share screen?
I did.
Haven't seen any change.
Well, hopefully our IT department will chime in, but in the meantime, Aaron Brown has his hand up.
Okay. Aaron?
Uh, sorry about that.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, so let's see. I hit screen, share screen.
At the bottom of your screen, you should, or at...
How about now?
There we go.
That works.
Thank you. The other thing, I'm set back. They tell me the camera's not good to me up close, so I'll I'm sitting back a little bit. Okay, so thank you. Let me walk through some of these these. There we go. Okay, so the changes tonight versus the May 28 meeting. A number of them had to do with the commercial building. I think we heard some concerns that, you know, we had some, some issues with regard to, we had some issues with regard to parking and some of the shared parking notions. And then talk a little bit about that tonight. The biggest change is the building has been reduced in size. We had originally applied for a 48,500-square-foot building. Approximately 10,000 square feet has been reduced from the building in, 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 in response to some of those concerns. The building is lessened in the retail component. It will still be comprised of a daycare facility, 20,000 square feet. And then it will have approximately 4,000 or 5,000 square feet of retail and the balance will be anticipated in offices. Now, with the smaller footprint, we were able to get a little bit more room around the building, but we were really able to pull the building away from Epping Road approximately, approximately 20 feet. And as I mentioned, the less square foot, of course, we have less required parking. The previous plan required to have 538 spaces. The current plan is required to have 508 spaces per year code. We're providing 409 spaces. And we're going to talk, we're going to talk shared parking in just a second. The other thing, the smaller footprint allowed us to do, some of the concerns we heard last week were about the drop-off area for the daycare facility. We've come up, you know, the intent here is for people to enter into the main entrance and then circumnavigate around the commercial building in this manner. This door here is the location for the daycare facility, so we provided a little pocket there for a drop-off facility in response to some of the comments the other evening. Vehicles could then head out to this particular curb cut here on Epping Road. With regard to parking, we took a, a different look, another look at parking. The previous, in original application, had submitted a fairly conservative parking analysis that looked at six different periods during the week and tried to determine the peak period of traffic and then compare that to what we were providing. But Mr. Pernoff recently obtained the software with the Urban Land Institute model for shared parking. And he said, you know what, let's, let's run the numbers for that. And that's what we did and we resubmitted that to Mr. Sharples. And in boiling that down, the Urban Land Institute model indicates that peak parking demand for these projects kind of working in concert is about 318 parking spaces, again, where 409 are provided. The original analysis had 377 as peak, where 409 are provided. So both evaluations, Mr. Chairman, indicate that sufficient parking is provided to meet the peak demand of these two projects. A couple other changes to the commercial area. This little curb cut right here that my mouth, my hand is to, the original plan had an in-and-out in this location. There were some concerns about stacking and queuing here and the people wanting to make a left while this was queued back. So this is an exit-only right here. So again, vehicles will come in, use the front of the building, enter into some of the offices or shop in the front. And then they're able to leave exit-only here. The other change is to this driveway here, the southernmost driveway onto Epping Road. Again, Mr. Chairman, we have two lots. We have two deeded curb cuts from the state of New Hampshire. Yes, we are in a controlled access right-of-way and permits will be needed for those. We understand that. But, but throughout the course of the review, there's been concern about access management on Epping Road, and this is a valid concern. Our change to the plan this evening was that this was a full in-and-out intersection. And what we're proposing this, this evening is just an exit-out, a right turn out and a left turn out. And there'll be no entrance in from Epping Road into that location. We think that's a, a good plan. We like having, first of all, a second access to a project of this size, even if it is for life safety vehicles. But again, as, as people circumnavigate around the building and get to this location, they have a pickup or a drop-off, they're able to just head out to Epping Road and take a left or take a right turn. So those are really the, the changes around the commercial building. Again, less square footage, drop-off area, little change to this curb cut, a little change to, or significant change really to the, to the access onto Epping Road. While we're talking access to Epping Road, I'll just, I'll just remind the board that, you know, this is a TIF district in Epping. That the town selectmen in the town meeting approved $1 million for a roadway improvement between Exit 9 and Continental Drive. And so one of the reasons why we've had this back and forth with regard to traffic issues is we've got a pending improvement. We've got a corridor study being done by, by Jason at VHB and trying to work our plan in with some of the moving parts. One of the items that, that Mr. Monahan wanted to bring forth this evening is that we do have some phasing plans in our project and it shows the residential buildings being built first, buildings A and B, building C, and then lastly would be the commercial building. Tom has indicated to us, although it's not shown anywhere in the plan, but we wanted to bring it forth tonight, that he'll hold off on constructing the commercial building until those improvements are, are constructed on Epping Road. And I'm sure when we get into traffic in just a couple of minutes, Mr. Chairman, we can talk a little bit about that. But again, we'll hold off on construction of the commercial building until those improvements are done. A couple of little minor changes to the site plan. We were asked to try to designate and install a, a van delivery and a moving parking space. We've done that in four locations near the entrances to the apartment buildings. And then, of course, one in the front here for the commercial building. So our plans represent four 12-by-25, little exercise. Both delivery van for an Amazon or a FedEx, but also a moving day. Vehicle could, a U-vault-type vehicle could park in that spot for moving. Those faces, those four spaces are not included in our parking calculation. We did receive some comments regarding landscaping for the project from staff. They were fair comments. Our landscape plan, landscape architect addressed those comments and those have been incorporated into our revised plan set. We added a landscape island in this back. This is kind of the largest here, this location here is kind of the largest interior parking bay in the, in the project. It had about 21 spaces to it, so we've added a landscape island here. We still have a waiver before you because we have some of the exterior parking bays that exceed 15 spaces. But I just wanted to call your attention to we added one there. Other item, I believe a request was made about curving. We have a curbing waiver. We did submit a colored scheme for curbing. Actually, yeah, that's a new perspective, very similar on the commercial building. It's just, it's been downsized and we've referenced, this, this graphic represents that smaller building. A colored curbing plan wanted to be submitted. What this depicts in three colors, slope granite curve, concrete curve where we have sidewalk. And we do have a request, Mr. Chairman, before you to use Cape Cod berm on some of the perimeter areas. Again, with a workforce housing project, we're, we're trying to keep certain items, certain costs down. And so we've, we've made that request, but we have submitted this plan that was asked of us to be submitted. And then, lastly, a couple other items were requested. The NHB database information was submitted to staff. That was brought forth at the last meeting. We also submitted a copy of our New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services wetlands permit. We know we have a significant wetland impact here. We've talked in detail about it at the last meeting. Where the, the, the approach and the vision here was to protect the backland and to be able to develop the front land. And in doing so, we've impacted wetlands in the front of the property. And we have received our New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Wetlands Bureau permit to do that. So those are the planned changes, Mr. Chair. I'd be happy to answer any questions about those changes or I can just segue into Mr. Pernoff, who's going to talk traffic. It's clearly up to you.
Okay. How about, how about we hear what Mr. Pernoff has regarding the traffic?
Great. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes, but Jim, can you stop sharing your screen if you're not, if you don't need that, please?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I was gonna try to give the board a a Reader's Digest version of the traffic study that we completed back in November of last year, and then I'll talk briefly about that shared parking memo. Obviously, we can handle questions whenever you feel it's important. The scope of our study was centered on the, the front door. The, back then, it was the two proposed full-access driveways. We went out to the site and did counts during the morning and the evening peak hour periods. We did the standard projections for an opening year and then a horizon year of 2031. As you heard tonight, the building has been downsized by about 10,000 square feet. That means our traffic numbers are going to have to be adjusted, but they're going to go south. They'll be slightly less. I think everybody knows what's out there today in terms of existing conditions. 27 is a two-lane road, 30 miles an hour. DOT latest count, they anticipate or they projected that this section of highway carries about 13,000 cars a day back in 2018. Like I say, we, we did our counts. The highest hour was the PM peak hour, 4:15 to 5:15, pretty typical. During that hour, people are leaving Exeter. They're heading to 101. So they're primarily northbound. We, okay, I mentioned the, the long-range projections. In terms of trip generation, the the original traffic study estimated 384 trips during that PM peak hour period. That'd be ins plus outs together. Again, the revised number will be less than that. We do expect the majority, approximately 65% to travel to and from the north. In other words, 101. Terms of net impact, let's say, south of the site, which is where most of Exeter is, we're looking at an impact of about 8% during that PM peak hour. And just to help the board put that into perspective, if you look in our report appendix, there's a three-day traffic count that the DOT did out here in front of the site. And in those three days, random traffic flow accounted for a difference of 6%. So we're at 8% normal variations and traffic flow is 6%. So there will be an impact. But it's going to be comparable to, I think, what you see out there on a day-to-day basis. We looked at things like intersection capacity. Obvious, obviously, taking a left-hand turn out of any driveway on this corridor during the PM peak hour involves a lot of delay. Level of Service F. Today, the mobile driveway, which we counted, they operate with level of Service F. And again, that's just an indication that it does take a while to find that adequate gap. The other movements are, are fine, right turn departures and, and left turn arrivals. We looked at the need for traffic signal control. Again, this is with two full-access driveways and we found that signals would not be warranted at this location. And again, Mr. Petropolis mentioned the idea of perhaps an initial phase of residential only and then adding commercial after the TIF improvements are in place. We did look, this was interesting. We did look at the need for turn lanes out on Route 27. And what we found is that there's a sufficient amount of traffic northbound turning left into the site where there ought to be a left turn pocket. Incidentally, when we looked at the mobile driveway volumes based on existing conditions, they have enough traffic where there ought to be a left turn pocket for them as well. So this is not earth-shattering, but these driveways are busy enough where having a center turn lane or a left turn pocket like we show in our report is appropriate. We also determined that in the southbound direction, arriving at this site, there ought to be a right turn lane. Now, everything I've said about turn lanes applies to the full build situation. We will take another look at these findings under residential only. And I wouldn't be surprised if, if it changes, but that's on our list of things to do. We've got good site distance. And we've recommended two exit lanes as a means to reduce delays, onsite delays. Briefly, on the shared parking memo, I'm going to correct one thing that Mr. Petropolis said. The ULI model is predicting a peak parking demand of 271. That actually occurs on a weekend. And as Mr. Petropolis said, they have a supply of 409. So there's plenty. The number of 318, which I believe he mentioned, was our recommended number of spaces to be provided. In other words, if you know a demand, always add a cushion. So we recommended 318. ULI is saying 271. And the site plan has 409. So this analysis confirms what was presented to this board the last time, that there is adequate onsite parking. And without a doubt, the reduction of 10,000 square feet helped a lot. So, and I will just note for the record that shared parking analysis is based on the new plan, not the old plan. We've been in touch with District 6. We've sent them a copy of driveway permit applications, our traffic studies, although I understand they already had them, and the site plan itself. They acknowledged receipt and said we'll be back in touch. So I'm kind of expecting that we'll probably have some type of a scope meeting and conquered with Mr. Sharples and Mr. Plord and the applicant and myself, and we'll talk about the scope of the final study. So that summarizes what I wanted to say at this point, and I'll either turn it over to Mr. Quigley or back to you, Mr. Chairman, if you have any questions. Does the board have any questions at this point from either of the?
I, I thought I have, I think I have my hand up.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm a little confused, I need to be educated, I guess. The original traffic study was from 19, 2018?
19.
2019?
Correct.
And we looked at this, we looked at this project for the first time in 18, I think, the end of 2018. And at the time, we were talking about 120 assisted living units and slightly more commercial space, I believe, maybe another 10,000 or 15,000. Can you go over the numbers again, what, where we were in parking requirements with 120 assisted living units and now we have 224 apartments?
Well, I, I can't do that because we were brought onboard in probably October to assess the plan that was proposed at that time. And that had-
You had to base some of your numbers on that plan, right? You kept-
The plan we were given had 48,560 square feet of commercial, retail, office and daycare and 224 dwelling units.
But, but the original plan had 120 assisted living and no apartments.
But that was, that was a design review, but then they subsequently went to the ZBA, got a variance to put multifamily not assisted living units and proposed that formally. So we went to the formal review of any assisted living facility.
Because at that time, we were, you know, we watched the meeting again, read those old minutes, and we were concerned about the traffic that was going to generate. And assisted living wasn't going to be a lot, obviously. So that, that original traffic study is nowhere in your calculation.
Correct, I, I just-
There was no traffic study on-
I don't think they had a traffic study, no.
There was no traffic study, it was simply designed-
I guess, I guess we just discussed it though at the meeting, not the study maybe, but the, the traffic impact.
Yeah.
All right.
And remember, Jason Plord is here from VHB if anyone has any questions of him, and Pete Steckler has his hand up.
Okay, Pete? Wait, there you are, okay. Turn on your voice, please, Pete.
Thanks for the reminder, and I hope my internet holds here. So I had a, I guess, I'm, I, I don't know much about parking, but the model that's being used is from the Urban Land Institute. And I guess I just want to ask for some additional details or clarification about that methodology because I don't think of Exeter or that part of Exeter as being urban land. So I just want to make sure that the model is appropriate for the, the setting that this project is within, where there is not, you know, walkable access to downtown or to, you know, my guess is most people are going to be driving rather than this being an urban situation. So I'd just be interested in some details about why this model is appropriate for this setting.
Okay. The Urban Land Institute, again, that's the name of the lead organization. There are several others that contributed to this work, and they've had a model out for, for years. I'm, I'm almost going to guess 10 years. And just this year, they came out with a new update. And it does, or it is capable of making adjustments when you're in an area, let's say a downtown urban area, where there could be walking trips and that would reduce demand and things like that. That was not done in this case. This was, the, the model that we used and the way we used it is compatible with this site in Exeter. And, and not to belabor the point, but if you have it in front of you, go to page four. I'd like to explain something. And when you get there, I'm looking at the top graph. Are you there, Mr. Steckler?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay. So the heavy dark line shows the parking demand from 6:00 AM to, to midnight, and you can see where it fluctuates. But that line is comprised of those four different land uses underneath it. The blue dotted line is the parking demand associated with the residential function. So you can see at 6:00 AM, it's pretty high, 250 approximately, and as the day goes on, most cars are leaving. And then they come back toward the end of the day and you can see the line going back up to, to midnight where it's highest. That's, pattern happens whether you're in a rural area or a downtown area. The other lines underneath it show what's happening with the daycare center. Again, very little demand starting off in the morning, but it builds up to a peak, drops off, and then there's another peak in the late afternoon when parents are coming to pick up their kids, and then it tails off. So again, the, the patterns you see here, the hourly patterns and monthly patterns are for the individual uses. And what's nice about this particular model, it's a procedure that accounts for how things vary by hour of day and by use. So the key figure here is that solid dark line. And you can see that it peaked at 270 on a weekday, and typically that's in December, and then 271 on a weekend. And these are well-established patterns for these types of uses regardless of where you are. And we did not take any credit for walking trips or anything like that.
Thank you for that.
And Martel has her hand up.
Pete, what did you say?
Oh, sorry. Now, there have been, for instance, David, help me, when we approved the Ray Farm complex, was there a traffic study associated with that one?
Yes.
And I guess then my question to Mr. Purnow is, was that study factored into at all in your recent anal, or your analysis of the traffic impact of the, of the Gateway Project? Now, admittedly, they're not, they're a bit different where they'll exit or enter on to Epping Road, but nonetheless, they are, they will be contributing more traffic because that project is somewhat larger than that single building which is currently there. Is that right, David?
So the, the answer to the question is, well, let me disqualify it. I, I believe so. We accounted for two other development projects south of the site, and one is an active adult community located across from Exeter Decorating Center. Is that the, is that the development you're referring to?
Um, that, I mean, there is, there's one in the Ray Farm where the TIF road is.
Yeah, I, I believe we're talking the same thing.
Okay, so that's one of them.
That, the answer would be yes.
But that was to be a much larger development, if I recall it, than just what is now built. David, help me again.
Uh, it's, it's, uh, they proposed four buildings, a total of 116 units. They've built Building A and they're building Building B. Um, until I hear otherwise, the plan is to continue building.
But there was to be more up, above that, was, there was to be a convention center and a lot of, is that-
No, that was, that was never formally proposed. They came in for a design review on that and a potential subdivision, but I have not heard anything since then. So there's nothing formally, you know, submitted that I'm aware of at this time.
Okay, thank you.
And Jen Martel has her hand up, and then Gwen English.
Okay, Jen, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I have a comment and then a question. So my comment is about the ULI study that Mr. Purnow prepared with a model, and I just wanted to say that I really appreciate having that information and seeing that. I think that the, you know, for mixed use developments, you know, if you just add up all the parking, you, you really are over designing and creating way too much, more parking than you'll ever need, and it becomes like a mall parking lot scenario where it's, you know, designed for Christmas Eve, but it's empty most of the time. So I really appreciate having this kind of model and being able to think about it as a shared parking scenario, and we can minimize the amount of essentially impermeable surface that we're creating in our town. So thank you for doing that because I, seeing it at the last meeting, it was a little hard to kind of wrap my head around the chart we were looking at and, and understanding, really believing it, but seeing the, the actual numbers in the graph, it's, it's like, oh yeah, this makes sense. So thank you. And I had a question about the, the VHB parking study that was sent to us, and I was wondering, since we have Mr. Plord on the call, if we could, I don't know, maybe get a summary of his findings. You know, the concern, I think for me, is about, you know, the sentence in the summary that says, "The proposed Epping Road site driveways are projected to operate with capacity constraints which could result in long delays and lead to safety concerns." So there's been some potential improvement measures, and I guess my question is, like, how would those measures be implemented? And then also, at what stage in this process do we hear about the NHDOT feedback on this? So I guess my question is basically, it sounds like if this development is going to move forward, it's going to have a big impact on Epping Road. So just how, how does that go forward?
Yeah, Jason just unmuted himself, so I'm, I'm sure that's what he's here for, and I'm sure he'll be able to speak on that. Can you, can you hear us, Jason?
Yes, I can. Yes, I can. Good evening, Jason Plord with VHB. So what we had done was we had prepared a peer review of the traffic study back in December. And as part of that review, again, that was based, as, as you heard from Mr. Petropolis and Mr. Purnow, that was based on a different build program than what they're proposing now. So that was 10,000 square feet of additional commercial space. It was having the southern driveway being full access. So now they're proposing exit only, little changes here and there, and now they're, they're proposing to do a phased build program. So they do the residential and then at a later date, come in with a commercial. So again, our comments were based on that full build of the development at that time. And that, our, our comments are referenced in our December 24th, 2019 letter to, to Mr. Sharples. And we had several, several different comments in there. They may or may not be appropriate at this point because of the changes to the development program, but back then, what was happening was that the, I guess in, in, the best way of presenting this is that in the traffic engineering world, we use different measures to be able to determine if a project's going to have an impact. We look at delays, we look at vehicle queuing. There's also another factor that we look at, and that's called volume to capacity ratios, abbreviated as VC ratios. So if you think about volume to capacity, what does that mean? Capacity, if you look at a glass or a cup, and the volume is how much water can fit in that, that glass. Once you are at 100%, once you're at the very top, you're completely full, you're at 1.00 or 100%. Anything over that, that just means that your vehicle demand is so high that it's exceeding the capacity of the roadway. And that's the situation that's created by this development at the site driveways for the exiting movements trying to get out onto Epping Road. And that is a safety concern because what ends up happening is that if people are waiting too long to try to exit from the site to get onto Epping Road, whether they're turning left or they're turning right, they could take a less than desirable gap in the traffic stream and cut out right in front of a vehicle, and as you know, down on Content Outlet Drive, there's a lot of trucks. So vehicles that may be trying to turn left or right out of the site driveway may be cutting, cutting it really close to getting in front of a truck. So that, there's definitely safety concerns. Mr. Purnow had, had mentioned about the exclusive turn lanes that would be, would be warranted along Epping Road, the, the right turn in, the left turns in, definitely, tho, those are, would be needed to be able to support this development. Do I know what would be needed to support the development with the reduced build program or the phased build, build program? I do not know that yet. So that's just based on that, that previous build program. Now, another rule of thumb that we have in the engineering world is if you are going to have a development that increases traffic through an intersection, and that increase is 100 vehicles per hour or more, then you should look at that intersection and find out what your impacts are actually going to be. And that's based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers documentation. New Hampshire DOT also follows that. If you're going to send 100 vehicles per hour through an intersection, you should generally look at that unless you are sending in even less traffic than that through a problematic intersection. But in this case, what's based on, again, that original build program, they're sending over 200 vehicles to the north, to and from the north through the interchange. And they're sending 115 to 135 vehicles per hour to the south. So one of our comments was that the study area is very limited and it should be expanded, and that's kind of where the New Hampshire DOT comes into play. Now, based on some correspondence from New Hampshire DOT, there is a controlled access right of way, abbreviated as CARO. And what happened was that when New Hampshire DOT made improvements to the 101 interchange at Epping Road, they had purchased land for, for right of way, and they had negotiated a number of access points with the different landowners in that area. So, so the development team needs to really, and they've already started that process, they're coordinating with New Hampshire DOT to find out about the number and locations of the proposed access. And even though the roadway itself is under local jurisdiction from Cronin Road coming south along the site frontage, that right of way, that controlled access right of way is on the land. So that kind of affects the number and locations of the driveways. So a lot of these, a lot of these unknowns should be flushed out through the New Hampshire DOT scoping meeting. Did I answer your question? I'm sorry if I didn't.
Um, I think you did. So, so basically, that scoping meeting is the next step, and that's something that happens between the developer and NHDOT, but it's, but I'm assuming since it's also a town road, the town weighs in also, right?
That's correct. So when you, when we have a scoping meeting, when, when we're representing, when our traffic engineers representing a developer, what happens is that the process is that we reach out to the district office, which Mr. Purnow has already done, and then the district office reaches out to New Hampshire DOT Bureau of Traffic in Concord. And Bureau of Traffic then sets up that scoping meeting. They send out an invitation to the development team, to the district office, to Bureau of Highway Design, the Regional Planning Commission, and the municipality. Even if it's just on a state roadway, they would still invite the municipality.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just, I, that, that clarifies the process for me. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good.
Gwen English has her hand up.
Gwen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a question for Jason as well, and I'm just curious what your thoughts are based on the letter that we got from our, our department, our enge, town engineers, and there was a suggestion possibly of eliminating the south driveway. Does that, does that seem like an extreme idea? Is that something that you think could work if, if certain- Is that something that you think could work if certain changes were possibly made on Epping Road? I'm just curious what your thoughts might be on that.
Yeah, my thoughts are that, I know that this parcel, or these parcels, are in the Epping Road Strip Management Ordinance, the C3 district. And there are certain suggestions, guidelines that should be followed. And one of them is under 6.8.1C, is that abutters shall consolidate access points at common property lines or as may be agreed elsewhere as to reduce the number of such points. And the whole point, the whole idea and the purpose behind this district, my understanding after reading this and discussing it with the town engineer and the town planner, is that it's really all about trying to control access, access management. And you want to have, you don't want to have driveway after driveway after driveway along the corridor. You want to be able to control it so that cars are able to almost have a central point of access to get onto Route 27 Epping Road. And that could be through signalized intersections, that could be through cross easements. And not just for this development, but for all other parcels that are vacant right now with a potential of being developed in the future. And that's separate from this project, even though they kind of coincide. We're working on a separate project to see what the Epping Road corridor would need to look like in order to support potential development of those vacant parcels up and down the corridor. So we're working on two different things. We're doing the review on this gateway at Exeter project, but we're also doing that separate project. And they kind of go hand-in-hand in the aspect of access. They're totally different because there's no way in the world that this developer should be responsible for traffic volumes that could be, you know, require six-lane cross-sections up and down Epping Road. They're not generating that much traffic in order to require that. And that just really wouldn't be fair to development or developer or to the town at this point. Because you don't want to see of asphalt, like, I believe I heard one of the board members say, I think it was Ms. Martel talked about, she didn't want to see a sea of asphalt on, on the premises for parking. It's the same thing on a roadway. If you don't need additional travel lanes, why build it? So it's not needed now on that full, extreme cross-section. However, for this development, I think that if we could control access, as the DPW has suggested, and we did in a separate memorandum that we put together, it would, it would really fall in line with the zoning ordinance with 6.8 for the C3 district. And it would also be able to provide a safer way to be able to get vehicles in and out of the site. Because a single point of access may be able to trigger the warrants for a traffic signal. And people turning left out of the site to be able to go northbound on Epping Road to go to the interchange, wouldn't you much rather be exiting out of there at a traffic signal, at a green light, rather than a stop sign? And the same thing, you know, anybody that's trying to go northbound on Epping Road that wants to turn left into the site, that has to cross all the southbound traffic. You know, they'd be able to have a green signal there as well. So it's, it's really all about access management and doing what's right for the developer as well. Now, with the reduced build program, I don't know if those numbers come close anymore. Because it was right on the border to be able to warrant a traffic signal before if we were combining the two access points into one. But we'll, we'll have to see what they come back with for a future traffic study.
Okay.
Okay. That's a lot to think about.
It is, it is. I hope I'm answering all your questions. I hope I'm answering them to your expectations.
No, you did. And I, I mean, I'm worried about the southbound exit with people possibly taking a left-hand turn. That concerns me. If you just had the southbound exit as a right turn, is it worth having that? And if not, is it, is it going to be manageable to have everybody going out of the exit that's closer to 101, given ideally, I mean, I don't, I'm not in love with stoplights, but if it's signalized, it seems like that might be the best way of getting people safely in and out of this development and onto Route 27. So it sounds like it's still something that needs to be looked at, especially given that it's being reduced by 10,000 square feet.
Right.
And it is being phased. So, you know, you were helpful. I appreciate your, I appreciate your feedback on that.
Well, the one other thing that I'd like to say is that for that southern driveway, I like it being an exit-only.
Yes.
As compared to the previous site plan where it was full access. Especially with the daycare being right there and people coming off of Epping Road and coming in a little bit faster to get out of the traffic stream. And, you know, and the little kids, and then maybe the parents trying to walk. And I like, I like how they also have that, that drop-off area and that driveway being an exit-only. I like it better than the first site plan that we had.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jason. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I guess I'm thinking, I'm sort of in Jennifer's, what's, you know, what comes first, the chicken or the egg here? What do we need to know about this whole traffic thing in Epping Road that will be comfortable to the board to help enable us to move ahead with the project? But I guess that meeting circling up with the state is going to be very critical in that process. And helping to determine, as we pointed out, Mr. Monahan shouldn't have to be building an Epping Road. But we've got to figure out how to get on and off of it safely. Are you leaning on your hand there, or are you asking a question? It's like an auction.
No.
You're bidding or not? Okay.
Trying to stay away.
Pete Steckler has his hand up.
Okay, Pete. There you are, Pete Steckler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I guess I, you know, I'm looking for both Mr. Purna's reaction and Mr. Plord's reaction to Jennifer Maitz's comment from the Department of Public Works about wanting that southern driveway to be a right turn only. If I understand her memo correctly and Dave's frame-up of it, I'd love to hear both the, you know, the applicant's opinion on that as well as Mr. Plord's opinion about that recommendation by the Department of Public Works.
Well, I'll take the lead on this one. Looking at the layout of the site and seeing where the drop-off area is, I think it's important to have that left-turn departure at the southerly driveway. And again, I'm just picturing parents picking up children that want to get back on 101. If you force them to take a right out, they're going to end up doing a U-turn somewhere. And, and that's, I don't think, something you want to encourage. So I think...
Can I? Why can't they go back to the north entrance and access it that way? I mean, I know you, it's skewed a little, so you have to do 135-degree turn. So I think the drop-off could be tweaked a little bit better to encourage people. But they can just swing around and go back and take a left on the first entrance, correct?
Well, we'll have to see what Mr. Petropolis says about that with his layout. I don't know if that would fit.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, if I may, Mr. Chairman, to respond, if I may, the, the concern has always been, as Steve just said, picking up and dropping off and getting back to the highway. If that were to be a right-out only, you know, we would need to provide a paved access adjacent to the commercial building that gets us out to the main driveway. And as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we pushed the building back to pick up 20 feet. We'd probably lose that 20 feet in a paved way on the, what would be the east side of the commercial building. So I think, you know, we, we feel that we have two curb cuts. We're proposing one and a half. I think that if the board desired a right-out only, I think we could probably rework a solution where we could circumnavigate that building to get back to the front.
Not to complicate matters, but I think another key question that has to be determined and answered is this, the whole idea of meeting a traffic signal warrant. If, and this is a hypothetical, if the signal warrants are not met, I don't think it's a good idea to have everybody exit left at one driveway. But Mr. Plord said that if you did have a signal at the north driveway, wouldn't you rather use that? And common sense is sure.
Yeah.
But I think we, we just have to wait and see on that signal warrant situation. And the other thing that's important is the signal warrant analysis is not a litmus test. It's a minimum criteria. So you have to meet a warrant before you can even consider a signal. The second thing, and this is a variable, the DOT is going to take a hard look at any signal that's close to the interchange. So it's possible we could meet a warrant and the DOT says no. It's possible we could meet a warrant and the DOT says yes. But they, you know, this is their right-of-way, their interchange, their controlled access right-of-way. We're going to have to give deference to them. We can run the analysis, but the ultimate decision, I think, they're going to weigh heavily on it.
Understood. That's why we've been encouraging, you know, DOT's involvement for, you know, since the TRC, to get them on board and start that conversation. We are where we are, but it's very important that they get on board and get involved in this with the, you know, with their right-of-way and proximity to Route 101. Couldn't agree more.
Yeah.
Gwen still has her hand up? Is that, is that just a mistake?
It's, it's me. And I do have, I do have a question. I'm kind of going back, and it ties in with this issue, but going back to parking. And if I've done my calculations right, it would appear that if you, given that you anticipate a 271 parking space need at your peak demand, and you're supplying 409, seems like you have, you potentially have 91 extra parking spaces that you feel that you don't need. If you, if you were granted that wish, where, where would you potentially eliminate parking? Where, where would it be the least necessary in this plan, in this current plan? And I'm asking because I'm still a little concerned about the drop-off for the Y. And I'm wondering if, if eliminating some of the parking around this building, around the, around the commercial building, if some of that parking could be put to use as kind of a, like more, more of a, not really a turnaround, but a, an area where people can pull in, park, potentially drop their kids off, or if a bus is coming in, it can be parked with ample room. It's out of the lanes of traffic, and it seems like that might be a little safer. And so I guess I'm wondering, like, even on the north end of that building, if people could come into that existing parking area and if the parking space is next to the building, maybe some of those weren't there, that might be a safe place for people to pull in, deposit kids, and then go out safely? I don't know if I've made that very clear. I'm happy to try to clarify it more if, if that's helpful.
Mr. Chairman, this is Jim Petropolis. No, no, Gwen, you were clear. I think what you're saying is, hey, if, if we do have an overage even above the requested waiver, don't forget your requirements ask us to build another 100 spaces. So, but I think what you're saying is, look, because we feel we have an overage, can we reexamine, I guess, behind the commercial building to improve drop-off and maybe look at circulation? I think that's what you're saying.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah. So that's a fair question. It's something we can look at. I think that, I, I, I really, what I really want to say is, you know, the residential is being the first thing built. It's probably a two-year build-out. There'll be no commercial building, as we said earlier, until the roadway improvements are done. We're not even exactly sure when those roadway improvements are slated for. Maybe Jason and Dave can tell us a little bit about that as well. But with the commercial building not being built, there will be no second curb cut to Epping Road until the commercial building comes forth. So what I guess I'm trying to say is, the residential really will have sufficient parking. It will have single access. And yeah, the comments Gwen made about using up our overage are fair comments, and we can take a look at that as well.
Okay. And typically, when, when I look at a project and I see that there's a potential of reducing parking, my first thought isn't, oh, let's keep it as pavement but do something else with it. I would prefer to put it back to a more natural state or leave it in a more natural state. But in this case, I just, I worry, I'm...
Might be a safer solution.
I've dealt with, with daycare facilities, and I've helped design one or two of them. And parking is always kind of the, it's, it's such an important part. And just getting kids from their cars into a building and done safely and get parents in and out of that parking safely, it's just critical. And it just worries me having it kind of on a corner where it is now. And again, I don't know where the, I don't know how the building's designed. I'm not sure where you anticipate the bulk of the Y portion of it being. But, so that would also play into it. But, but just a thought, that's all I had for now. Thank, thank you.
Jen Martel has her hand up.
Jen?
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback on Gwen's comment about the parking at the daycare facility and the drop-off. Because that's kind of been bothering me too. And I would agree, like, if we, I mean, at the last meeting, I felt like we didn't have enough parking. Now that we're looking at it, it's like, wow, maybe we, maybe we have plenty of parking and we can lose some spots and create a better drop-off. And I think one of the things that's bugging me about this drop-off, in addition to Jen Maitz's comments about all the left turns, is, so like, if a bus pulls through here, the kids are getting out on the wrong side. You know, they're getting out into a traffic island, and then they have to cross in front of the bus. So it's like, if you're, you know, if you're going to design it, design it so the kids are getting out of the bus and going straight into the building. So, you know, I, I understand that this is way down the line, but I feel like it should, you know, I think it can be, I think it needs one more pass in terms of the circulation. I'm not totally comfortable with this, this internal circulation.
Mr. Chairman, recognizing that the time and the amount of coverage we've come in, I mentioned that we had a three-pronged approach this evening, and we've gone through two of those. I was wondering now if it would be appropriate to ask if Mr. Quigley could speak a little bit about wetland and environmental issues?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, may I first? I mean, are there any more questions of Jason Plord from VHB? And if not, if you've asked all the questions, we can excuse him from the meeting.
Good question. We appreciate his report. It's very helpful.
So no final questions for Jason?
Pete, yeah, Pete must have had...
She has her hand up.
Yes, Pete.
Is it proposed that, Jason, you will submit something which will take into consideration more of what you've learned today? Or are we basically going to just have that report and that's it?
No, my, my job is not done yet, sir. My, my understanding is that when the New Hampshire DOT scoping meeting is taking place, I'll be in attendance with Mr. Sharbles.
Thank you.
So, yeah, so I'm, I'm, I'm not done yet.
I'll also be in discussions with Jason about the, about the revisions to the plans to see what that means, and also Mr. Bruno.
Oh, good, okay.
And Pete Steckler has his hand up as well.
Okay, Mr. Stecker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, you know, before Mr. Plord goes, we didn't get to hear his opinion that may be valuable to the developers team about that right turn only recommendation by the DPW, so I'd just be interested to hear his opinion on that. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Yes, so my, my opinion on that is that when you can reduce or eliminate turning movements at problematic intersections, that could be a good thing, but you also have to look at what the ramifications would be. Like if you, if you made, let's say you took both of these driveways and made them right in, right out only, where are people gonna turn around? So in this situation where there is another access point for the northern driveway that people could turn left out, that would just in itself seem to be able to reduce some, some of the critical movements at two different driveways, and combining them at one location. Now, that is based on the previous build program. We just don't know what that impact is going to be as far as the, the 10,000 square foot reduction in the commercial building. We, you know, I think that one of the other issues too is, you know, I think, and it's great that the discussion was held about that drop off area and, and the parking, because that does affect the operations of that southern driveway too.
Yes, yep.
So I think that one thing you may want to consider is that if there, if the board feels that there is an excess of parking spaces, then maybe some of those parking spaces can be dedicated strictly for that daycare. And then instead of having the drop off area, you know, people can park right in those spaces, get out of the car and go get their kid. I think that that may be a little bit safer. Again, I'm not a site engineer, so, I mean, that's really up to Mr. Petropolis. He's, he's a good reputable site engineer. He's been around for a while, he really has, and, and I've known him for a long time. And, and he's good at what he does, so I, I know that he'll be able to come up with something.
Good to know.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Steckler, did I answer your question?
Uh, I think you did, but it sounds like we need to wait and see, like you've said multiple times.
Yeah, that's exactly right. We just have to wait and see until we know how much traffic we're actually talking about.
Great, thank you.
And redesign of the smaller building, looking at this, what we call surplus spaces.
Exactly, exactly.
Yep. So let's now go to the grounds.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if, if, if you'll allow us some time, Brendan Quigley, we became aware this week of a letter of members, Mr. Steckler had sent to the board, a memorandum based on a sidewalk, and he brought up a couple of points that we would like to, like to discuss. I'm gonna turn it over to Brendan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. So as, as you know, Brendan Quigley, I'm a certified wetland scientist in New Hampshire with Goof Environmental, right there in Exeter. And as Jim mentioned, I wanted to take some time to directly address some of the, some of the questions that Mr. Steckler raised in his letter. You know, we, we do appreciate a thorough review, as the board does, particularly by one of their members. We find that it often does help focus what the questions are, and possibly to shed some light on things that, you know, may have frankly been overlooked. So in this case, I, I wanted to make sure, because the letter did, did seem to me to possibly be able to give the impression that there were a lot of deficiencies with my work. And so I, I feel it was important to, to frankly correct the record on a few items and provide some additional information on some others. And, and I'm, I'm sure there'll, there'll be more questions from the board as well. I'll, I'll kinda start with the easy stuff. The, the iris, well, the natural heritage report that's required to be submitted in connection with the wetland permit, it did identify an endangered plant and a exemplary natural community. The endangered plant is an iris species, slender blue bearded, bearded, beardless iris, and this was observed by Mr. Steckler in the pond area, well, I should say, an iris was observed by Mr. Steckler in the front ponded area, semi-permanent ponded area, it's not being impacted. And, and this was in, in fact, where I had, in my coordination with natural heritage folks, determined it was most likely to be, and then they actually signed off on that. And this is a relatively common process when their review takes time, plays way outside of the, the season when you'd typically be able to identify these things. So they, they had a level of comfort that the habitat on site was really limited to that area, and that there, there was very likely not any other suitable habitat on, on the, on the site. Mr. Steckler also pointed out that there was iris in other places, and that I did not expect, so I did investigate that earlier this week. And in fact, there are a number of, I identified seven areas where there was an iris, unfortunately without flowers at this point in the year, but we're in luck, because the difference between the rare iris and the more common blue flag that most people are probably familiar with is, is fairly easy to distinguish by two key features. The slender iris has very narrow leaves, only a few millimeters wide, mostly like a, almost like a grass leaf, and all the, all the iris that were on the property, including by the pond, had the, the much wider leaf form, which would indicate Iris versicolor, which is the standard blue flag. The, the seed pod also has a distinct shape, which is more sharply triangular, and that was absent as well. So the, although we did have an unexpected occurrence of the iris outside of that ponded area, it is all in fact, the more common non, non-endangered species, and I do plan to update natural heritage with this information. This is a matter of following up. There's also, and this creates a confusion, a number of projects in Exeter, because it's an area where this natural community, one of the few areas where this natural community exists, and that's the swamp white oak and oak basin swamp. These are more or less like red maple swamps, where the dominant species is swamp white oak instead of red maple. It's, you know, important to note, and I believe I mentioned this last time, I know I did at the Conservation Commission, is that the, the tree itself is not a protected species, it's, it's the combination of the tree in the basin swamp, in particular soils and the other related species that are in that, in that community. So this is something that we've looked carefully at a couple times, and this is also a very distinct, distinct tree. The leaf, the leaf form is quite a bit different than white oak, and as are the, the bark, particularly on the, the smaller branches, which usually can be found peeling off in sort of a circular manner. The, during the winter, the, the entire development area was, was surveyed for significant trees under the Exeter's ordinance, which was easy to do during that time of year, very good visibility, and that provided a really good walkover and determination that, in fact, there, there was no swamp white oak seen at that time. I've also had the benefit of being on the site prior to logging in 2009, following up on some even earlier work that my office did. And I can, I can tell you that the dominant tree in the wetlands is red maple. There is a significant amount of red and white oak on the property, but in this case, the white oak is the, the standard Quercus alba, which is not what to look for, it's an upland species primarily. So I'm, I'm very confident that the swamp white oak basin swamp does not exist on the site. It may be that the area once was, or that there was possibility of it nearby, but this property's been, been historically logged a number of times, which does tend to shift the, the dominance of species, and, and red maples, something that I would expect to, to come in with a little bit more ease than, than, than the swamp white oak. The, the other, the other thing that was raised is the potential for vernal pool breeding habitat at the front of the site. I think specifically in a very small, sort of excavated or modified depression that's right next to the road. Now, I guess to answer Peter's comment earlier on, we did not deploy any, any minnow traps in that particular small area. We did do that for the larger area, and as, as I noted before, ended up capturing an abundance of green frog tadpoles, and this was in first week of May in 2018. You know, when you're capturing tadpoles that are that big, those are tadpoles that had overwintered in that pond. So there's, even though the, the ID of those tadpoles is, is not always easy, they were certainly not wood frog, because they grow up in a pond and leave in the same season by necessity. So the, the smaller area, the tadpole that, unfortunately, that was dry completely when I went there this week. I had hoped to look at some of those tadpoles myself. I'm not able to confidently identify what was pictured in Mr. Steckler's report, although it does appear by size to be likely a green frog, or apparently a number of green frogs that, that may have tested the waters in this small area, only to find that it didn't actually have a permanent hydrology. We've, you know, I've, I have, and several other people from my office have, have been looking at these wetlands for a number of years, and those, those two up front have, have gotten a lot of attention for this, for this issue. Formerly, we reviewed those two front areas twice, once in 2015, and then again before this proposal. In 2018 is when we did the traps, and the other area was, was dip netted, it's small enough that that was able to be done thoroughly. Now, the only thing that was ever pulled out of that small area was a single fairy shrimp, and without the, any other evidence of, of breeding by amphibians, we've never been seen any egg masses or anything in there, that was, the determination was made that this really doesn't represent evidence of breeding by fairy shrimp or anything else. It, it may be that frogs, even though the hydrology is, is potentially suitable, just don't use this area. And this, this information was, was all in the state wetlands application, which is maybe something that should have been explained more thoroughly, left the door open for, for misunderstanding on that front. But the vernal pool issue was, was discussed, looked into on a number of occasions, and really reviewed with federal and state authorities on a few occasions for, in advance of this and, and proposal as well as others. The conclusion being that the proximity to the road in particular really undermined some of the, the habitat suitability there. Lastly, I guess, in general, just as, as far as the wetland delineation itself, you know, as, as I've said, we've, this, this property by us and others has, has really received a lot of reflagging efforts. I've personally flagged it twice, as well as done some verification of, of much older flags from the late 90s. And all of these have been very consistent. Also, I should, I should point out to the disappointment of some of our clients, because obviously there are quite a few wetlands out there, spread out across the site. You know, I, I feel that we've worked with Exeter a number of projects, and I am not aware of any, any time that the quality of, sort of the basic wetland delineation that I've done has been an issue. And it's, as a certified wetland scientist, we, I take it very seriously, I'm required to by the certification, and I, I'd hope that the board would, would consider that. It's certainly no, no surprise that it's hard to find flags when you're out there now, and that, that's tests to the, the rate and quality of the, of the area's recovery, really. And even just two years ago, it was far easier to reflag that. I would not want to do it again, is all I can say. So with that, I think I've addressed some of the main things in, in the field report, and I would be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Brendan. Very helpful.
Mr. Steckler has his hand up, I don't know if it's leftover, or?
Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks, Dave. It was leftover, but I was about to put it up when I noticed that. So first of all, you know, I, I just wanna say that the fourth point of my, of my letter to the board was not questioning Mr. Quigley's qualifications or delineation, it was really stating that the wetland flagging out there, and since Gwen was with me, I think she can back me up on this, was very difficult to see, to understand what was marked as wetland and what wasn't. And that's really essential for us to understand the wetland impacts of this project and consider voting for a conditional use permit. And so without those reference marks in the field, to understand what's being impacted and what's not from a wetland standpoint, you know, I feel like that's something that we definitely need. Again, this, this proposed project has an enormous... Again, this proposed project has an enormous footprint in terms of impacting wetland resources. Almost three acres, I think I did a quick calculation to put that into perspective. That's almost 2.2 football fields, including their end zones of wetlands that are going to be lost because of this project. And not just, you know, any ordinary run-of-the-mill wetlands. These are high-quality wetlands with a lot of, as I said in my letter, microtopography, where I would even suspect on wet springs that some of the other wetlands that Gwen and I looked at could function as vernal pools during wet springs, because they hold a lot of water, and there's evidence of that. So anyway, given the enormous impact of this project, given that there are, well, I think that justifies that the wetlands need to be identifiable with updated flagging for us to understand those impacts. And I think that it warrants a third-party review, given the enormous size of these wetland impacts. So just wanted to say that. It sounds like from Mr. Quigley's comments that he found one of these state endangered irises. Is that correct?
No. All the iris that was on the site, including the ones around the pond that were photographed for your report, had the wide leaves like this and rounded edges on the seed pods, which are characteristic of the regular blue flag iris versus color. The flowers themselves will always have some variability, but these two features are really the clinchers. If you look at good, you know, not just any stuff I would caution against looking up on the internet, reliable information in general, but there's some good guides from the Maine Natural Heritage Program in particular, and some other botanical sites that point to the size of the leaves and the seed pods as really good identifiers. And that's what I saw out there.
Do you coordinate at all with the Natural Heritage Bureau about any potential iris occurrences there? Or are you satisfied that there's no irises, state endangered irises, on this property?
I'm satisfied. And additionally, I think natural heritage is as well. But I will, as a matter of due diligence, and because I think it's also something that would please the members of this board share that information that I just explained to you, and have some survey data that show this. Because it is fairly common practice for the Natural Heritage Bureau to coordinate rare plant surveys based on suitable habitat. Often, it's either impossible or really improbable that you'd look every inch of a site. And this is a small site, but some sites are much, much larger. So you wouldn't necessarily be looking for irises on top of dry oak forests. So you tend to narrow these things down, and that's sort of the obvious example. But the habitat for the iris is wet meadows, shores of ponds. It really is very more of an obligate and wet species, and not something that you'd expect to find underneath a tree canopy in the forest. This is just guessing, but it could be that those other occurrences of the regular iris out in the site were, in fact, caused by the opening up of the canopy during the last few years when it was logged, very sunny. And also, by way of removing the trees, some of those wetlands did get a bit wetter for lack of transpiration. So, you know, that might have led to them spreading where they probably wouldn't have otherwise. But, you know, we identified, in my correspondence with Amy Lam, early on, I said, you know, there's a bunch of almost low gradient forested wetlands with poorly drained soils on, you know, 90% of the site. And then up front, we have this semi-permanent pond. I think that's the only area where an iris would potentially be, and it's not being impacted. So that was the extent of our coordination. Now, we have some additional information, better information that in fact proves that it is there, and that it's not the iris that is the rare one. So we'll update them with that as well.
I would have to say, we didn't have a coordinated site walk because of the situation at hand. Typically, when we do have a site walk, we ask the developer to identify particular areas of where the roadways are going to go, give us an idea of the position of the buildings, and the wetland situations that are in the immediate area being developed. So I had gone out there by myself, and it's hard to find some things. I found some empty shotgun casings and some holes. The stakes have been shot up, but, I mean, it's, you had to look around and try to get some idea of where you were, and a couple of posts of stakes about buildings A, B, and C. But I don't have the expertise at all. But I've been out there two, three times. One time when Darren had set up a tour to show us the type of land that was on Epping Road that we would probably be dealing with sometime. So just kind of observation. And, you know, the property changes here and there, but...
Mr. Chair, can I ask a couple more follow-up questions?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So regarding the potential vernal pool at the front of the site, you referenced that it could have been an excavated feature as opposed to a natural feature. I'm curious, you know, how, if you have any evidence that supports that. And then, you know, just curious about secondary indicators of vernal pools, because you can use secondary indicators rather than, you know, just the egg masses, for example. The fairy shrimp, I think, would fall into that secondary indicator of a vernal pool. And I guess I'd just say, you know, associated with the, you know, my recommendation, or that I think that of a third-party review, given the size and extent of wetland impacts at the site, I think a third-party review is warranted of this pool feature as well. Just given, you know, it is a classic vernal pool sort of feature, I'm not sure you can say one way or the other whether the tadpole that I was holding in my hand was a green frog, or a wood frog, or whatever it was, because you really need a microscope to identify tadpoles by their mouthparts, which is very difficult. I've tried it before. And so that would also be my feedback, or my recommendation, that we need a third-party assessment of this vernal pool. So I think with that, I will let others ask any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just jumping in, I just want to remind the planning board that the site was inspected by the Exeter Conservation Commission. We do have a letter of support from them. The site was inspected by the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. The site was at the same meeting inspected by the United States Corps of Engineers and the United States Environmental Protection Agency. We had all three agencies watch the entire 60 acres early on in the project to get their sense of how they would feel about, again, the vision of protecting the back and developing the front. And so I would submit that that third-party review, we believe, has been done by those review agents. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I add, well, respond about the excavated area? It doesn't really matter so much, first of all. That wasn't said necessarily to, in defense of it not being a vernal pool, more in terms of the quality. But the big piles of dirt right on the other side would be the evidence that I used to determine that it was at very least modified area. I think it's also important to note that we're not, although there is a very small wetland impact in that area, it's not actually impacting the basins, that pond. This area, very narrow finger, if you look carefully, and I'm sorry, I don't have shit set up for screen share, but there's a very narrow finger extending from the basin. It kind of pinches off, and that area is just ferns. It does not pond with water. So in a sense, really, there's no impact to the pool itself, regardless of whether or not it's a vernal pool or not. As far as secondary indicators, secondary indicators are part of identifying pools. They are allowed. I would never use secondary indicators to identify a vernal pool where I had previously seen, observed for two years, no egg masses. So essentially, those observations would supersede indicators such as fingernail clams and various insects, essentially known to use vernal pools as well, but not relying on them for reproduction, such as the salamanders and the wood frogs, which are really driving the identification. So at this point, I think it would be bad practice for a reviewer to look at that area and determine that it was a vernal pool, when in fact, all it had to go on was the secondary indicators.
Mr. Brathaus has his hand up.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. I'm wondering if we could ask Kristen Murphy to comment on the current conversation?
Sure. Kristen?
Good evening, everyone. So just as a general overview, I did receive a copy of Mr. Steckler's letter and shared it with the Chair of the Conservation Commission, who shared it with the full Conservation Commission. Obviously, the information that was there was new information to the Conservation Commission. So I also followed up with Brendan to get a sense for what his next steps were and what his correspondence would be in terms of speaking with Lori Summers and Amy Lam. And so the first day that I got it, I contacted him. He was heading out in the field, which I can't remember what day that was, Monday, maybe, or Friday? Sorry.
It was just Wednesday, actually.
Oh, okay. Yesterday. And so I checked in with him again this morning to hear a little bit about his description of what went on. The Chair had asked me to follow up with him and let him know the outcome of Brendan's survey. In listening to his response, I felt like he had really strong characteristic descriptions in terms of taxonomic characteristics of the iris, and felt pretty comfortable with his identification there. I felt that, you know, without being on site and being there to measure myself, that seemed to align with the differentiating characteristics. So I felt pretty comfortable with that. And then in terms of the swamp white oak, you know, without seeing it myself, I really don't know. Brendan has been on other properties with swamp white oak, but it's hard for me to weigh in. We did do a site walk with Carlos Gwenden, one of the Conservation Commission members, who really does key in on that species. He was one of the first ones to point that species out on another property off of Cameron Lane. And so I feel like he would have probably identified it had he been out there, but we weren't targeting looking for that. So I really can't, you know, I can't say where I fall on that issue. In terms of the vernal pool, after reading the letter, I reviewed the wetland report that Brendan prepared, and noticed that there was a fairy shrimp, which my understanding with the state New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, that actually is a primary indicator. But, you know, whether, what species of tadpole that is, there's no way to discern that. So I shared that information with Drew Coff, he's the Chair of the Commission. I did reach out to Lori to, before I had heard back from Brendan, just to find out what the options were. One of the concerns on behalf of the Commission was the wetland permit was issued June 1st, and so the appeal period ends June 30th. And so that's a pretty tight timeline for the Commission to hold a meeting and make a decision whether they wish to appeal it. So we really wanted to sit, I really wanted to sit in, hear this discussion, primarily with respect to the vernal pool, to see what the next steps are in terms of the planning board. There was no direction or request on behalf of the Commission yet. I think it was kind of like, let's listen to Brendan's report, let's hear follow-up discussions, and then reconvene on Friday. So that's where I've left it with the Chair at this point. And I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Kristen. Any other questions? Anyone would like to ask Kristen? Yes, Jennifer, Jen?
Actually, my question was for Mr. Petropolis, not for Kristen. Should I hold off?
Well, I assume it's related.
It's related. So the comment about the fact that this wetland is not, the impact of the wetland is minimal, it's just a small finger, but it looks to me, from the drainage plan, that there are catch basins outletting directly into this wet area. And I just wanted to double-check with Mr. Petropolis if that is, if I'm reading this correctly, and the stormwater that's being collected from the parking lot is being treated before it is outlanded to this standing water potential vernal pool area, in which case that seems to me like it is a pretty significant impact.
Dave, can I share the screen for this response? So the area we're discussing is this area right here, wrapping rope. Where there is a, Mr. Steckler's brought forth a concern about this very small, isolated wetland here. And what Mr. Quigley said is this little, this little southerly chip, this little finger, is being impacted as a result of the proposed site driveway. And the reason the site driveway's in this location, of course, is for symmetrical alignment to mobile across the way. There is no drainage being discharged into this basin whatsoever. I think we computed anywhere from 18 to 20% of, of that body was being impacted in that finger. And Ms. Martell, I'm not sure if you were asking about this particular larger wetland. Was that your question? Turn on your speaker, please, Jen.
All right, I always forget to do that. Yeah, I was looking at the, the bigger area and thinking that those were all connected, but now that I'm looking at it.
There's an outlet pipe right here, and that is not discharging water in. That is providing for, if this thing ever built up and overflowed, it would kick into our system and we would hardpipe it to the back. So there is no direct stormwater discharge into this wetland as well.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Gwen has her hand up.
What was that? Did you say, Dave?
It's me, Lang.
Gwen, okay, Gwen.
I don't have a lot to add. I, I do have one question for Kristen Murphy, and that is whether Carlos saw the pictures that, that Peter took when we were out on our site walk. I know it's difficult to identify plants based on pictures. You don't have measurements of leaves in these, but, but I just, in any research that I did, it did look like a bearded iris. And I just, is that what I meant? Oh, yes. It must be after nine o'clock. It did look like the more endangered iris. So I, I guess I just, I was curious if Carlos had commented on that. And then I didn't want Peter to feel like he's out in, you know, the lone soldier out in the field, talking about the site walk we took without my commenting on it. And I, I realized that this is a challenging site. Brendan, I know you've done a lot of work out here, and you've spent a lot of time examining this property over the years. But I concur with Pete in that it was, I, I, I don't know that I saw a wetland flag. There were flags that were apparent, but they didn't look like the typical wetland flags, which made it challenging for us to use those as markers for wetland delineations on the plan set. There were just times when I just, I thought, wow, I don't, I don't know if I, if we're where I think we are, because it seems like there should be a wetland flag visible from this, this place that we're standing in, and there wasn't. So whether they've just been subjected to weather and they've, they've faded, I don't know what has happened, but it was really challenging to try to figure out where we were, if we were standing in a place that seemed, that was wet. It was, it was, you know, there were plants that seemed like they were wetland plants. The ground was squishy and/or it had visible water in it. And yet we couldn't see signs for, for wetland markings. It was, it just left us a little puzzled as to what was, what was being classified as wetland and maybe what had been overlooked. And it's, 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 it's a tough site to walk. I mean, I wish we could all go out there and look at it again. I, at times, I felt like I was walking in the Florida mangrove. It was, I mean, kind of on your hands and knees, crawling under bushes and through this web of vegetation. It's a really challenging area to look at closely. But, so I appreciate the difficulty in, in marking it. But I, I just wanted to stand by Pete and, and the comments that he outlined in his letter. And that, that's all I had for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Gwen, appreciate that.
So just to answer, this is Kristen. Just to quickly answer your question about Carlos, the, the report or the letter from Peter, including the photos, were provided to all Conservation Commission members. We've not just met to discuss that as a board, so I've not heard any comments, other than what Drew and I talked about in terms of consideration of holding a special meeting or not.
Thank, thank you, Kristen.
Okay. Well.
I see there are two attendees, but I don't know if we told them that they have a raised-hand function. So if you want to talk, you can hit the raised-hand button. You know, there's, there's been a couple attendees in there, you know, on the meeting the whole time. I just wanted to say that, you know, they're, they're welcome to speak. At some point, if they wanted to speak, they could raise their hand and, and provide any comment they might have.
Thank you, Dave.
And Mr. Steckler has his hand up.
Okay. Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I guess I just want to respond to something Mr. Petropolis said about the site being inspected by the Conservation Commission, the State Wetlands Bureau, the EPA, and the Army Corps of Engineers. And I just, I just want to say that, that, that's not a third-party review. That's not an intensive third-party review of, of wetland functions, values, resources, vernal pool assessment, especially as I, I felt like there was somewhat of a statement there that the, a part of that site walk was to evaluate mitigation potential of the backland. And so I just want to put that out there, that that's not usually, that's not the, well, Kristen can answer if that's the function of the Conservation Commission, to provide a third-party review of wetland delineations and functional evaluations. But in my experience, that's not the, the role of the state, the EPA, or the Army Corps in their regulatory duties.
I guess I'm happy to respond. So the Conservation Commission does take a look at, at wetland plans, their plans delineating wetland boundaries. We do often request that plans have the wetland flags denoted on those boundaries for field review. But the majority of Conservation Commission members are not wetland scientists. And so we do rely on the certified wetland scientist stamp and that professional designation. If there are obvious reasons to question a wetland delineation, our regulations do allow the ability for the Conservation Commission, Planning Board, or others to request a third-party review.
Yeah. Well, any other comments or questions, or what our next steps may be?
Gwen English has her hand up.
Gwen?
Mr. Chair, this doesn't really, I'm not really answering your question. I guess just a brief statement. And I, you know, I was struck from the, the first view I had of the plans as to how much wetland and how many wetland buffers were being impacted. I think when we got our most recent package and received the one page that, that they put together, which I deeply appreciated, but it was, it was a page that, it is the wetland buffer impact plan. And when I looked at that and, and saw, it, it's been hard for me to do the coloring and put in the buffers on the, on the site plan. But seeing this particular page and observing just the, the impact of parking and buildings and grounds on this, this particular parcel, it's, it's pretty shocking. It almost appears that like three-quarters of, of the site is, the buildable, built, built-out site is on wetlands and wetland buffers. And I don't minimize the, the impact of having the protected acreage in the back. I think, you know, I think that's fabulous. But it's hard, it's, it's a hard pill to swallow, even with that. I think I just, you know, I appreciate wetlands, I appreciate the buffers. And I, I'm going to struggle with this plan because of the, just the massive amount of building on, on wetlands and buffers. And I, I don't, I can't add more to that, but I, I, I think this, I think we need to look closely at it. I'm, I'm somewhat on the fence about getting a third-party review. But I think it's something that would be worth the board talking about. And just, I would be interested to hear what other people's comments might be on that.
Okay, all right. Other members have any thought about?
Jen Martell does.
Jen does, Jen?
I guess my question about if, if we did receive a third-party review, would it be specifically for this area that has been observed and is in question? Would it be for the entire site? And then I guess my other question is, if it, if the third-party review did say, okay, yes, this, there is a vernal pool here, how would that change your, how would that change the planning board's decision-making process? Those are just, I mean, I don't know, I don't know which way I'm leaning on this either, but I'm just, I'd like to hear more about what, you know, Peter Steckler is the one who is proposing this. I'm kind of curious, what, what do you expect to come out of it?
I mean, I, I think that given what's at stake here with almost three acres of wetland loss, high-value wildlife habitat, a lot of flood attenuation for the, what lies downstream of these wetlands, which is a large portion of the town of Exeter, that it's worth the due diligence to make sure that this is, that, that all the resources on this site are adequately captured. I think there's a lot at stake here. I think, you know, the question is, you know, how does, how would that change? I, I don't know. I don't know how that changes other board members' opinions. For me, I guess I'll just say, I may be going out on a limb here, that I, I don't think we ought to be, we ought to be permitting, you know, this size of wetland. You know, it's the, it's the wrong-size footprint for the wrong-size site. And so I guess that gets at where I'd be at, you know, in terms of considering conditional use permit criteria. And I think there's some serious issues there. So maybe it's not necessary from my standpoint, but I do think, you know, at least from where I sit, but I do think that the resources ought to be adequately and fairly categorized. You know, there's, you know, a, a high probability of a vernal pool on the site that hasn't been identified as such, that hasn't been into, built into the mitigation requirements for this property. Does that change things from the state's standpoint? It, it might. There may be other species out on this site, for example, that, that a third-party review would identify. You know, am I convinced about the iris? I'm not, I'm not fully convinced about the iris. I, I'm not arguing that this is a swamp, white oak basin swamp, but I believe that there's swamp white oak out there. So I, it's all to say that I think there's some disagreements in terms of what's on this site, and that I think for the board to make a fully informed decision, that they ought to have that third-party review, since so much is at stake with a nearly three-acre impact to this property. I, I think that's the responsible thing to do for us and for the residents of Exeter. We all know that wetlands are important. We all know that impervious surfaces are, you know, create challenges. And the filling of a lot of wetlands with a lot of impervious surfaces, you know, sort of magnifies those challenges. So that's where I stand, and happy to hear where others are at. Sorry for the, to go on there.
Well, I think we need also to consider the total acreage of the whole site. So if we're looking just at the site, this portion's being developed, then certainly it's a major impact, a great impact on that percentage of the land. But if we look at the whole site, you know, kind of back to the traffic, gentlemen, we talked about filling the cup too full, or in this case, we're disturbing a certain amount that's in that cup. So I'm just thinking we need to, you know, keep the big picture in mind as we wrestle with what we're doing, you know. And Petropolis was talking about the roadway coming out and avoiding that particular spot where that pond is. I, I found that one myself. I don't know if that can be preserved. It's going to go right, the road will go right by it. I assume the boulder that's there and part of it would remain, but I'm not sure if you change the environment close by around the whole thing, what effect it's going to have on there. So just not, you know. And I'm not sure that a third-party is going to help answer those questions. Maybe, maybe not. I don't know. Pete Cameron, you have a comment?
Well, I guess my, I'm not quite sure exactly what this third-party review, what is it going to start with? What is its base? Is it to, and I don't mean to use the word critique, but is it to critique the presentation by, by the, by the developer? Or are we starting, Pete Steckler, are we starting with something brand-new? And will, will it, in essence, examine as though the, does it take it de novo, or does it use anything as its base to start with? Maybe I haven't even phrased that correctly, but I'm still puzzled when we're potentially looking at a third-party review. What it really is going to, where it starts, and what do we do with what it's going to end up, but we don't know what it's going to tell us. But we need to be aware of what it, what's its impact.
Or, or what is, what is it that we're looking for? I recall Pete and, and the board, we've done this once or twice before, and Dave's been involved with it. That's a matter, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, it's a matter of getting the, the soil scientist, Brendan in this case. the soil scientist, Brendan in this case, together with another soil scientist and with Dave, I think, uh, and, uh, walking the site, comparing notes, uh, to confirm the findings or to, you know, and there were, there was some, some, um, one site we had between, oh boy, where's that? Down off Linden Street where-
Ninety-eight, ninety-eight Linden.
Yeah.
I think, I think it's, it's as you describe it in general, but generally when we bring, you know, when we do bring in a third party review, we try to define the scope at the board and what it's specifically going to look at. In that specific instance, we had two, two plans showing different wetlands delineations. So there was obvious like a discrepancy, uh, between the two. So we got a third party review to go in there and, and, you know, and, and help us out, figure out, uh, where the wetlands are actually, you know, marked. Uh, on the other one, there was a couple other issues and it was specific to that. So i- if the board does decide, you know, to go to a third party review, that, that kind of parameters would need to be identified. You know, just saying a third party review doesn't mean much without, uh, identifying what you're actually reviewing because you could, you could review the entire, you know, wetlands assessments and delineation and vernal pool. May, maybe what I'm hearing is the vernal pool and so forth, but I can't, you know, Mr. Steckler is the one recommending it, uh, he's, he's proposing that. So I, I'd let him fill in the details of what the parameter is. Uh, in the meantime, Aaron Brown and, and then Jen Martel, I don't know if that's a leftover hand or? Yeah, it was a leftover hand. So Aaron Brown, uh, would like to speak and then Peter Steckler has his hand up as well.
Aaron looks like he's holding up his head.
And I'm losing. Um, I would say the third party review, if we do it, the scope and nature are up to us. So there is no, we have to have them stay within a box. We create the box on that. Uh, what I have personally seen in this hearing so far is one of our board members has submitted a pretty significant letter, has, uh, had that addressed by the developers, wetland scientists, piece by piece. And our board member has not backed off on any of his claims regarding the iris, regarding the oaks, or regarding the vernal pool, and has continued to reiterate a desire for a third party review. So my feeling is if nothing else, out of respect for our board member, we should do a third party review. That's my personal opinion on that. And I do want to make a couple other quick comments. It is getting late. I'm not comfortable with this proposal on one major criteria. When this corridor was developed, I was on this board. I've been part of the, uh, volunteer government in this town. And we really had brought in water and sewer and TIF and everything else, trying to create a commercial corridor. And it seems like, uh, landowners in this corridor much prefer residential uses. And I understand profitability, I understand the industry, but I also understand that the town, uh, the master plan, the town people who voted to pay for water and sewer to go down this road, did that with assurances that it would enhance the commercial development of this area of our town and have an applicant in front of us who's not increasing their commercial use, but in a new iteration is very willing to shrink their commercial use and maybe delay it. So they'll phase it out. Makes me very unhappy. I'm aware and was part of an approval at eighty Epping Road where we approved 94 residential units and our commercial benefit to that is an aroma Joe's kiosk. And I'm not the only board member who was part of that approval. Not real happy that that's the ultimate use of that plan. Certainly wasn't what was sold to the town when we approved water and sewer going through here. And frankly, I think the traffic study has to be completed. It's not. We heard that from staff that it's really not at a point that we should be taking any further action on this application, other than maybe giving the developer direction as to what we need to be able to take action. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Aaron.
Steckler has his hand up.
Mr. Steckler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, in terms of a third party review, I think, you know, the facts are that the board can evaluate wetland impacts to consider a, a conditional use, um, permit because it's very unclear, and I, I think Gwen backed me up on this and maybe anybody else who's gone out there, it's very unclear where the, where the wetlands are on the site based on, you know, evaluating that, uh, this property in the field because there's no reference marks, the flags are intermittently, um, uh, viewable. Um, and it's not like we just, you know, sort of were in and out there. We, we beat the bushes, literally, out on this site. And, um, we did, we did encounter some flags. I've got some pictures of them, but you, you know, we didn't find any markings on those flags. Um, and again, they were few and far between. So, so I think a third party assessment or review, we could go two ways. They reflag the site so that we can review it and is it to our satisfaction, uh, or, you know, in terms of evaluating a conditional use permit? Or, uh, can they work with, uh, can the applicant's team work with a third party reviewer, given that we can't do that review based on the lack of, uh, of markers on the site to evaluate the wetlands? Um, you know, I think the vernal pool needs to be assessed, uh, and, and we need a third party review of that, uh, given, uh, what Ms. Murphy noted as, uh, you know, the fairy shrimp being a, a primary indicator, um, for vernal pools and that it was, uh, it was observed in that pool. So, um, you know, I think that's, that's pretty compelling. Um, and then I think that there needs to be a third party review of the, to evaluate the natural heritage bureau's, um, report as well to evaluate whether the site has any of the, um, species noted, um, from that report. So, you know, if you're talking about a scope, I think that gets at the, you know, sort of a proposed scope of a third party review. Um, I also, uh, would suggest that the third party review, in light of, uh, somebody going out there, reviewing the wetlands in the field, also, um, do a review of the functional evaluation, uh, of those wetlands, given, um, that it's been represented that these wetlands are of low quality. I think that, uh, and, and they're sort of ordinary plain Jane forested wetlands. That was not my, um, my experience. So I, I'd be interested in a third party's review of, uh, a functional assessment of these wetlands as well. Uh, so just wanted to know on a potential scope of a third party review. Thank you.
Okay. John, you got any, uh, feelings in regard to the, I'm trying to kind of-
I, I yield to the people with more experience on the wetland issue. I tend, I tend to agree with a lot of, a lot of what they've said. Um, I have other issues with the project that we'll talk about at some point, I think, but, uh, the wetlands, I yield to, to Pete and to Gwen and to Jennifer. I would agree that that third party review is probably necessary, based on what I've heard.
Okay.
So may I, Mr. Chairman? I mean, am I hearing that the board would like a third party review? I mean, that's a pretty critical question to get answered this evening.
That's what I'm trying to get at. I, I think that's what I'm hearing.
And I think just to double back on that, let me recapture because I, if the board does, I generally am tasked with doing it and reaching out and, and coordinating with, uh, you know, potential well and scientists, uh, to do this. So I want to be crystal clear. As Aaron said, it's up to the board to determine what the scope is and I, I agree with that. But I'm hearing, um, a reflagging of the wetlands, but I believe that would be the applicant to do that, correct? I mean, we wouldn't hire a third party review to flag the wetlands, right? Okay, Pete's nodding his head. Okay, so reflag well. Uh, to the extent, I mean, where, and when you say that, that's in the area of disturbance, uh, you know, up by the road? Is that where we're talking about? Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think in the disturbance area.
Okay. Yeah. Uh, then. Okay. And then the third party review, I heard three things. They would review the vernal pool assessment, um, you know, to determine if there are vernal pools, uh, in that area, um, not in the back site, just in the front park, correct? Okay.
Yeah.
And then that's one. Evaluate the National Heritage Bureau report and confirm the presence or lack thereof of the blue bearded iris. Is that, okay? And then the final would be evaluate the, uh, functions and values assessment of the wetlands being impacted? Okay. Is that?
Yeah, just, just to clarify, so I'm not sure if we're asking the, the applicant to reflag or not, um, or if the, um, the third party reviewer can work, you know, let's say they receive the DWG file of the wetlands and put that into a GPS unit. They, they may be able to go and, uh, review those wetland boundaries on their own without the reflagging, uh, being completed. Um, so that's, that's a potential and I guess that's a decision. Uh, but as a board, we still can't, you know, then we're fully trusting, which I think is reasonable, that we fully trust that our third party reviewer has, uh, verified or offered corrections if needed to the characterization of wetland resources, both the extent and the, you know, functional assessment of those resources. So, um, I don't know if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's what I tried to say and accept that you added maybe reflagging the wetlands as deemed necessary in concert with the third party reviewer. A third party reviewer feels like he can make sense of everything out there, he or she can make sense of everything out there, then, then there might not be a, a need to, to reflag. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Uh, and also I just want to notice that Kristen Murphy and Brendan Quigley and Aaron Brown all have their hand up. I don't know what order, but, um, oh, Aaron Brown ran away. So Kristen Murphy.
Kristen?
So, um, I just want to be sure that the board understands that a wetland scientist going out to evaluate a vernal pool at this time of year is not going to re, return the presence or absence of egg, uh, the only conclusion could be the absence of egg masses. So, um, so there needs to be a level of comfort, um, to rely on some sort of secondary, um, indicator species to indicate a vernal pool or an assumption that it is a vernal pool unless it's proven otherwise. Um, so I guess I'm just a, a little concerned, or I just want to make sure that you're not anticipating a yes or no as a vernal pool, um, because that's a challenging thing to do at this time of year.
And Mr. Quigley had his hand up as well.
Yeah, thank you. I, I was, um, gonna mention the same thing that, that Kristen just pointed out and, uh, that is that, uh, whatever comes out with respect to the vernal pool, uh, out of any kind of third party review, um, is likely not going to give you, the board, the kind of, uh, concrete answer I, I think I'm hearing you, you're looking for. The other, the other thing about, uh, doing peer review on wetlands delineation, um, we, we do that a lot. There's some, there's certain towns that do it as, as a matter of procedure and, um, we're, we're fine with that, but it, it does help to have flags. This would be, uh, enormously difficult site to reflag such that we had to look, um, at or reflag. We, and I, I do go out, when I go out to the site, I have the, the lines on, on a GPS. Um, and in fact, we provided those to Kristen, uh, for their site walks what, as well. Um, so the, the, normally what, what ends up, um, coming out of, of these peer reviews is, is very minor differences. Um, if what you're looking for is, am I totally wrong? Or did I miss some huge wetland? That's a, that's a different question, I think, that you might want to consider. Because you, you're likely to go, we'll go through this whole process only to be right back where we are. I mean, like the, the wetlands on this site have been, have been flagged a number of times and they really haven't changed. Um, you know, the, the difficulties of, of locating yourself on the ground on a dense, densely vegetated site should not be mistaken or construed to, to mean that the wetlands are inaccurate. It's really more of a problem of, of navigating than it is a wetland delineation, frankly. So that's all I have to say.
Yeah. Gwen, you're in deep thought. If you've got a question or thought you want to share?
No, I, I think Kristen and Brendan are right. This is, this is the wrong time of year to be, especially after basically three or four weeks or more of being in a drought, I think. Um, and the season for finding egg masses in a vernal pool has passed us by and I think when Pete and I were out there, we were probably at the tail end of finding things that were, I mean, we found some things in the, in these pools, but, um, I, I, I'm kind of stuck. I don't, I don't know where to go from here.
Jennifer Martel has her hand up.
Okay, Jen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I guess my question would be to the applicant, I mean, just throwing this out there, can we just move the development a little bit, move that entry road, um, to avoid the vernal pool? I don't know if that's possible, but that would kind of help. I mean, it sounds like we probably wouldn't get a definitive answer until next spring. Is, is there any way to just avoid it altogether? Um, and if that happened, would that satisfy, um, member Steckler or is, is there more, um, that we need verified? I guess, um, you know, the way I'm leaning is, is, you know, I do think that the, the, we have to rely on the fact that the, you know, certified wetland scientists report and knowledge of the site is extremely thorough and is, is probably correct, except for this one outstanding question mark that, um, so i- if we could just avoid that question mark, I'm wondering if that would satisfy.
This is Jim Petropolis.
Yes.
So again, we don't believe it's a vernal pool and that's been our testimony here this evening. Um, I showed you a drawing earlier where the alignment across the street with mobile we thought was very important. So I think to answer your question, uh, Ms. Martel, I think it would be difficult for us to, to shift that entrance just because the greater, the greater benefit here is traffic geometry versus nipping the, that south end of that, uh, that wetland soil. So I hope I answered your question.
You did, thank you.
Brendan Quigley, do you have your hand up or you just left it up? Okay. Kristen Murphy has her hand up.
Okay, Kristen?
I'm sorry to keep chiming in, um, but I just, um, want to put out there that, um, one, DES regulations do indicate that- do indicate that the presence of a fairy shrimp ident- is, is part and parcel to the, to the definition of a vernal pool. And so, to, to me, I think there's an, there's an opportunity to get the opinion of DES here. They, the wetland report did not discuss impacts to vernal pools, neither did the wetland permit. So, to me, that's a critical component and a critical piece of information here, and to know, will the wetland application need to be amended? Will the permit need to be amended? I, I think that's a very, or do they feel that the presence of one fairy shrimp when the site has been inspected multiple times is sufficient enough to disregard it as a vernal pool? I don't know the answer to that, and so I think having their Lori Summers weigh in on this would be helpful.
That makes sense.
Kristen, how would, I mean, how do you go about proposing that, to get Lori Summers, you know, to bring?
Well, I mean, frankly, I feel like it's, it's Brendan's responsibility to raise these issues, just as he's raising the issue with Heritage Bureau of the survey and his conclusions, I think it's important to do the same for, for DES. But I, I do think that should, should the applicant feel strongly that they don't want that approach, my sense is the Conservation Commission is willing to initiate that conversation.
All right, thank you. Peter Steckler has his hand up, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, just in looking at the information we received, Planning Board Application for Conditional Use Permit, Wetlands Conservation Overlay District, that, that we received in our last, I think, May 28 packet, the conditional use permit criteria that we need to evaluate, number three, as stated in that packet, is a wetland scientist has conducted a functions and values study of the wetlands and deemed that the wetlands under consideration will not be negatively impacted by develop, by the development. It seems to me that, you know, again, this is where the need for some third-party review is warranted, that, you know, I, I'm, I'm not sure I agree with their assessment of the quality and functions and values of the wetlands on the site. And as I said, I, I think that's something that would go, that would be, that I would encourage us to include in the scope, you know. So just to reiterate why I think this functional assessment is, is important, because we're going to have to, as a board, vote on this conditional use permit. I do agree with, with Kristen that, you know, some additional coordination with the state, wetlands folks, the Wetlands Bureau is, is required. Maybe that's the, the right place to start, to see what their recommendations are, but I think still, as a, as a board, getting that independent third-party assessment of that vernal pool, even if it's based, well, it's based on some historic record of this fairy shrimp, but also, you know, secondary indicators, a lot of, in my experiences, you know, some very qualified wetland scientists really know, can, can see a vernal pool for a vernal pool. But I, I understand we need to back it up with science, so, anyway, I just wanted to note the conditional use permit criteria that we need to evaluate. Thank you.
Well, the hour's getting late, and I would hope we could come to some sort of conclusion or step ahead. Back to the, the review of the, or the assessment that, that Mr. Steckler was speaking about, if it obviously, and which we know is not time to confirm vernal pool, at least under normal conditions, will a functional assessment and the connection with the National Heritage Commission answer questions that we're looking for? I mean, or do we want to go and see what DES has to, can provide for us?
I, I just want to say, Mr. Quigley has his hand up, Molly Cowan has her hand up as well. I don't know if that's leftover, but just, you know.
Okay, well.
I don't know if Mr. Quigley's hands are, are up as leftover, but I definitely know Molly has her hand up.
Okay, Molly?
Everybody, sorry about the connection here. I mean, I am interested in moving ahead, at least in some capacity here, so if we could make a decision about whether or not we're sending this out to, to review, and then if we do, we have to agree as a committee that we're going to accept whatever, whatever conclusion we have about the vernal pool, understanding that we are going to have to rely on secondary characteristics rather than the traditional markers of vernal pools. And also, I mean, it's my understanding that DES has waited on this site, so I don't know what we would get necessarily by going back to DES. But I also think that we should move this along so that we can continue this process and vote on something tonight.
Well, I, I think Dave has reviewed what the board would be looking for, asking for another assessment of the pool and the functional, functions.
Yes, this is how it was, how it was proposed by Mr. Steckler, just recapped, recapturing that. And then I would assume, I would add one last thing, I would assume if you, if you did want this, you'd want them to attend the next Planning Board meeting?
Yes. Well, that this case is heard, yes.
Understood, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So to move it along, maybe I could ask if there's a motion to ask to have that done? I think there's consensus there, but we need to have a.
As an, as an alternate, can I make a motion or not?
No.
No, okay.
Thank you for asking.
And it looks like Brendan's hand is still up.
Okay, Brendan, your hand still up?
Ye- yes, it was. At, at the risk of, of seeming like a, feeling like I'm interrupting your vote at this point, the one particular part of this, the, the natural heritage, the two species, the oak and the, and the iris, I think that when I actually present what I'm going to be submitting to Natural Heritage, it, it should be abundantly clear, and it, it'll be, it'll be their decision whether or not to accept it or not. I know I, I didn't have pictures of my descriptions, but, to show you, but I, but I do have that information, so there's forthcoming information. If, if, if it all, just simply to simplify what sounds like it's gonna be already a fairly complex review, we, I, I'd urge you to at least leave that one out.
Mr. Steckler has his hand up.
Yes, Mr. Steckler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I just want to encourage the board to not leave that one out. That's my recommendation. Thank you.
Cameron?
David, didn't you outline at least what you thought half an hour ago would have been the basis for this third-party review?
I did.
Would it be helpful at this point in time to go back over those again? Because I agree with Molly, we've got the fisher cut bait here.
Oh, agreed.
The time is, is passing, but I'd like us at least to have something that we've all heard.
Yeah.
And then, I, I will not frame the motion, but I think that this is where we should, and somehow, we gotta, gotta keep going. So David, could you review those, at least from my part?
The third-party would entail or encapsulate, one, the applicant would re-flag the wetlands within the disturbance as deemed necessary and in consultation with the third-party reviewer. For example, let me just elaborate on that one, if he felt the handheld GS, GPS information that he had, you know, he or she had was adequate to go out, then, then that would suffice, so there'd not be a need for that. The other ones, the, the ones that will be done, third-party review of the vernal pool assessment, three, evaluate the New Hampshire Heritage Bureau report and confirm presence or lack thereof of the blue-bearded iris, four, evaluate the functions and values assessment of the wetlands being impacted, and five, attend a Planning Board meeting.
Kirsten, does that work for you?
Was that for me?
Yeah.
Yes, that, that was my question, Pete Cameron asked, does, does that capsulate what you would like to, or do you want, do you have, do you have something to add to it?
I don't have anything to add to that.
Okay. Thank you for asking a question.
So is that a motion by Pete?
As long as I don't have to repeat it. Okay.
Is, is that a motion, Pete?
I, I'll, I'll make that motion as long as I don't have to repeat it.
Thank you, Pete. I will second. Oh, John, go ahead.
Whatever, I will second, you can second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Thank you, John. I think that we've had enough discussion on this, so I'm gonna call for the vote. I'm gonna start with Gwen.
I'm unmuted. Vote aye.
Aye, okay. Molly?
Yes.
Okay, Aaron?
Uh, yes.
Oh, Pete? Yes, I'd like to see a little more enthusiasm.
It's late.
John, how's your vote?
Yes.
Uh, and Jennifer?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that's a vote, and it passes. All right, the hour being what it is, I think we need to.
Can I just, before we do that, I understand the, the hour's late, I just want to make sure that, you know, the, the applicant has the direction, that, you know, obviously we, we've, we've figured out the wetlands, but is the board expecting any other information? I mean, I heard that the traffic, you know, people were still concerned about that, that can be more fully developed, potentially, you know, looked into, VHB will, will, will be a part of that as well, and, and, and internal circulation needed to be looked at. Am I missing anything? Like, those are the things I saw.
Yeah, I don't want to lose track of the traffic issues.
No, that, that, that was loud and clear, but I just didn't want to miss anything else, like, so, you know, we can be focused on certain issues when we return.
Dave, when you spoke about the internal circulation, we were, we, does that include the, I'll call it the redesign of the pickup, drop-off?
Well, it could, it just depends, yeah. It could, yeah. Yeah, because it, you know, if, if you lose a left out, you know, you have two lefts out now, if you lose a left out, that'll, that'll obviously impact, you know, internal circulation.
Because I see that as really as one, one.
Yeah, why you do one place, so, so that, that, that sounds like covered, and, and then also Aaron's note about, you know, the commercial, you know, being reduced or maybe being delayed, I heard that as a, as a, a potential issue, so that, I'll look into those things, and that, if that, that sounds like it encapsulates the concerns raised tonight.
Mr. Chair, I just have one question, and it may be on a plan set, and I'm sure Mr. Petropolis can tell, tell me where I'd find it. Is there, is there any place on the plan that shows the limit of clearing?
Yes, the grading plans show the proposed tree clearing limit, yeah, they're on several plans, Gwen, throughout.
Okay, the grading plan, you said?
Grading plan and also the erosion control plans as well.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Go ahead. Well, the next thing, are you ready to, to wrap up the meeting and table the item? Is that where you're going?
Uh, yes.
Okay, I just, just alert the board that their meeting schedule, as of every year, they take the second meeting in July off. That has always been the case, so you do not meet in the second meeting in July, which would be the July 23 meeting. The July 9 meeting is already, well, I mean, you can add anything you want, but it sounds like that's, that's not going to be feasible to get a, a third-party review between now and July 9. Forgive me. So, I, I'm just wondering, you know, that would be the, you know, you're, the August 13th meeting you set aside for CIP, generally, so I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what the board wants to do for schedule and future meetings. And, and, and fairness to other applicants waiting too, we've been kind of focusing on two applications here for the last several meetings since you started back up, I think the last four meetings have been dedicated to two projects, and we do have eight, nine projects in the queue with seven of them waiting to get in. So I just want to talk to you all about, you know, just have a discussion about that, of when you would table this too, and then, you know, the July 23, no, no meeting, just, just to remind you of that.
Why can't we schedule a meeting, why can't we have one on the 23rd? I mean, here we're driving, these are driving down and on and on.
No, you can, Peter. You just haven't, you adopted a schedule.
Yes.
Do every year before the year starts, and back in December, you adopted your Planning Board schedule that you all have, and as of every year since I've been here, you do not schedule a meeting, it's like your mini summer vacation, the second meeting of the month in July. So instead of, you know, two meetings a month, 24 meetings, you have 23 a year. So I'm, I'm just pointing that out, that that's what you adopted, you certainly can change that, but that's why.
We, we probably should have a meeting.
I think we should consider having a meeting on the 23rd.
Okay. Sure, I mean, I'd, I'd be.
I'm in favor of a meeting.
Yeah, I think we have to.
Okay.
And John, you've got some things, you're in your craw there at some point that have got to come out.
Yeah, I, I'm saving them. It gets by you guys first.
Gwen, do you have any problem with that? Taking a vacation but having a special meeting?
I'm not going anywhere.
Yeah, I don't think I was going very far.
Sadly. No, I'm, I'm okay with that.
How about you, Jen?
I feel like we kind of had a little break in, in March and April, so I'm fine with charging through.
Consensus is, we can.
You'll meet on, you'll meet on the 23rd.
23rd.
And I'm ready to make a motion to table this to the 23rd?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I want to be sure that Pete would be able to make the 23rd. Steckler?
Yes.
Can you make the 23rd?
I I can make it remotely, yes.
Yes, we'll all make it remotely.
I can't make it in person.
Just a minute. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, before you make a motion, I know it's late, but I'm a little concerned when a board member said he's waiting to give us some comments. If your comments or concerns, we'd like to get them earlier rather than later. We're all about trying to address them as best we can. And I respect Mr. Gruder's comments and his thoughts, and if you can share with him to Mr. Sharples or something sooner rather than later. I'd hate to learn something new on the 23rd.
I think if I, if you want, my concerns are architecturally, there's something that's supposed to be the gateway to Exeter. You heard this before. We talked about it in the 2018 meeting. And, you know, Mr. One hand even agreed it should look special, and I don't think it does. I I made a comment last meeting about the commercial building. I thought it wasn't bad, but then you told me that wasn't even may not be the final rendering. The the it looks like we're looking at the back of the apartment building. Then I heard a comment that I didn't know about, but what Erin made about the Tiff district, and it was, you know, all designed for commercials, so I'd like to get into that and try to learn a little bit more about that before our next meeting as well.
Thank you.
So I'm going to make a motion that we table this case to July, was it 23rd date?
Yes.
Yes. 7:00 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll call for, we'll call vote, Gwen.
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Pete, Cameron?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
And is that everybody? Myself, yai?
John, John, aye.
Oh, John, okay. See, you took your picture away. Okay, that's that's a decision. So we'll do that, meet back on the 23rd with these folks, 7 o'clock. And thank you for your, thank you for your time. Thank you for the traffic studies. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Now. Why I always do this? There was there any reports you needed to make? Dave?
I just wanted to make one quick announcement that mixed use neighborhood development project was received the New Hampshire Planters Association Project of the Year Award. I think it was, I think it was a great project. Hopefully, you know, there's some situations that have happened lately, but hopefully we'll get a project under it under it in the near future. But I was happy, pleased that they recognized Exeter's work and and I, in my acceptance video, I I specifically mentioned the the hard work of the planning board, the master plan oversight committee, the housing committee and others that were that helped us and the citizens of Exeter that that helped really make that project what it was and 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 got the award. So thank you for that. Appreciate it. But I wanted to tell that good news, and that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, congratulations. Good. Well done, Dave. Anything else? Will they go to the order?
Lang?
Yes.
I think that we're going to have the ability to meet physically again if we choose as a board, so we might want to just discuss that briefly.
Dave and I were chatting a little bit on that, so can you give us any kind of background, Dave, that we can just?
Yeah, I mean, it's the, there's nothing official yet, but there's been talk about the reopening of the town offices. I think that's going to happen sooner rather than later, from my understanding. In the month of July, we're going to start letting people back in. The governor has relaxed the orders based on these statistics that are in our area and so forth. And we will have the ability potentially to meet, start meeting in person again, obviously with, you know, any, you know, following, I would recommend following any social distancing guidelines, CDC guidelines such as social distance, spreading apart. We wouldn't be able to do it in the no act room, but we would be able to do it in the town hall potentially. I just wanted to, you know, throw it out there to see what the board thoughts on that were. I mean, I know it's going to be a board decision. I'm not advocating for one position or the other. I have heard from a couple of board members that kind of feel that the personal, the in-person process is a better process than maybe video is and, you know, but I I just, I wanted to have that discussion with the board, see, see what people's comfort levels and what your thoughts were. Then on my end, I could start, you know, working those logistics, making them work if if that's where the board wanted to go.
Could it be either way? I mean, could an individual opt to attend virtually and not be in person?
Well, that is.
All of us.
Well, that's a bit tricky because particularly, you know, I have to keep working with IT on that. I did ask them that question, but they have difficulty of, you know, how do you hear the people that are zooming in and and and, you know, the microphones and stuff? So so I can't explain it. The IT people explained it to me, so.
And how do you, how do you do crowd control of the public then?
You would, you would, you would require one applicant at a time and someone on that issue, like the public would come in, want to comment on that particular at a time. If if the room got, because the room's pretty big, all be, all chairs will be set up, you know, six, a minimum of six feet apart and so forth. So, I mean, we'd have to work out the details. I haven't gotten to find, you know, details yet. I think that part of it would be, you know, the select board would probably be involved of letting letting people use the town hall again on on a public, just like the opening of of the town offices. So there's a lot of details that still would need to be worked out, but I didn't want to pursue that if if the board was feeling, let's just keep keep virtually.
I think we need to consider that even if the board is comfortable meeting in person, there may be members of the public who want to contribute to their opinion on planning board meetings, but don't feel comfortable coming. So if we did meet in person, it would be nice to have like a call in option or something along those lines.
Yeah, we could certainly, we could certainly allow.
Assuming the state law would allow that. Don't know.
Right now, under the rules that they've relaxed and so forth, I I believe, you know, I have seen the hybrid. Some communities have done a hybrid. Some communities kind of kept meeting, like the couple would still come in, they wanted to come in, and and everyone else would be virtual. So there is, there is that going on out there. So I think that is a possibility. That's a good point. You know, we don't want to suppress public input. We want to encourage it and, you know, give give as many options as possible for people to input. So I'll work with, I'll get there and work with IT on that if the board's comfortable in in moving that direction.
I think I am not in favor of meeting in person, especially in the summer, especially in town hall that is not air conditioned while we're still experiencing a pandemic. I think that the Zoom option that we're that we're that we're participating in now works really well, especially for people who are at risk and to allow for social distancing. And I, as much as I want to meet you all in person, I know, I know many of you, but I don't know all of you, so it would be great to meet you all in person. And I think that, you know, you lose something as a board and in your cohesiveness in 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 working through cases when we're forced to be online, but I also don't think that there's any way to do it smartly and safely until until the situation with the COVID-19 looks much different than it does now.
Because the acoustics in the town hall are not the best in the world. But if we're talking, you know, a board, that may be, that may not be a problem. Don't know.
So just to be clear, Molly, are you saying that John Gruder is at risk?
I, he, he may not be the only one.
So I guess, I guess what I'll take is, I mean, I, when when Lang and I talked earlier, it was like, if everyone felt comfortable, fine. If no one, if someone didn't feel comfortable, then let's just, you know, keep going. We can meet virtually. We don't have to meet in person. We're not, you know, the rules, the governor's executive order have not changed in that sense. So we we are free to keep meeting virtually. So I was just seeing if there was a consensus. It sounds like we'll just keep meeting virtually and then maybe revisit that issue as we see appropriate.
I agree.
All right.
All right.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to adjourn, Erin?
Would I? Would you adjourn?
John, second?
Second.
Okay. Those in favor, we can do a voice vote. Yay! Thank you for so much for your patience.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. Bye bye.